Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 9th, 2018 Board of Supervisors meeting for the County of Placer. We will begin with a flag salute led by Supervisor Wegant.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. We will now turn to our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by the County Executive Department. All items will be approved by a single roll call vote. Anyone may ask to address consent items prior to the board taking action and the item may be moved for discussion. Does the board have any consent items they wish moved for discussion? Anyone in the audience seeing none? I'll ask for motion.
Mr. Colonel.
It's been moved in second to approve the consent agenda. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Duran, Wegant.
Yes.
Yuler. Montgomery.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes, thank you. Now is the time for public comment. Public persons may address the board on items not on this agenda. Please limit comments to three minutes per person since the time allocated for public comment is 15 minutes. If the comments cannot be heard within the 15-minute time limit, the public comment period will be taken up at the end of the regular session. The board is not permitted to take any action on items addressed under public comment. Mr. Krevler, good morning.
Good morning. Bradley Cover, Granite Bay. In reviewing the update of the regional bikeway plan that will be presented for adoption later this session, the plan shows a Class 1 bike trail across the newest portion of the storage facility in Tree Lake as existing. As you're well aware, Class 1 trail does not exist and has been the focus of our recent presentations. Prior to voting yes to adopt this plan, please consider why you should vote for this erroneous and unresponsive document. You should ask why this board's conditions that Commissioner Moss built his portion of the trail was ignored and why this board's condition that the developer notified the California Fish and Game to apply for and get permission to build the trail in the wetlands was ignored. It appears that Commissioner Moss exerts great influence even on regional bike trails. So what will you do about this today? Fifty members of our Granite Bay neighborhood spent nearly two hours at the park's public outreach to vote walking and biking trails as our highest priority. However, the Class 1 trail across from Tree Lake Storage and the future connector by Baldwin Reservoir to the Folsom Lake wasn't even listed on any of the project prioritizations or cost tables. Is the county going to ignore the community feedback we provided and complete the trail for the future? Instead of making sure the developer built a dedicated, safe Class 1 trail, you gifted him hundreds of thousands of dollars and made the public responsible to permit and build his trail. Today, the easement exists but is not viable and its path through an electric tower and wetlands, and we don't have a dedicated Class 1 trail despite what's shown on Page 52. Now you will vote on an alternative bike lane that shares the road on Eureka, a dark, hilly, narrow, heavily-traveled commuter road. The four fatalities or severe accidents in Granite Bay makes it about the most deadly community in Placer County, but apparently, safety isn't a priority as your bike lane plan is for us to share the road instead of creating a safe, dedicated trail. Your vote yes sends a clear message to Granite Bay to go play in the streets. In closing, CDRA ignores state open space laws, ignores state environmental laws, ignores its own landscape guidelines, and makes secret deals, making numerous decisions benefiting and enriching Commissioner Moss. And now the CDRA plans a Russian roulette bike lane on Eureka instead of completing a dedicated Class 1 trail to Folsom Lake. Will you ever build a continuation of this trail to Folsom, or do we just play Dodge 'em cars forever? How many more Granite Bay fatalities are needed for you to listen? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Oh, good morning, Ms. Neifer.
Good morning, Supervisors. I'm Patty Neifer. I live in Panrin, longtime resident, and I have the pleasure of volunteering for a lot of community nonprofits. And I'm just here to thank you for the revenue-sharing program and let you know how much of a difference that makes for small, all-volunteer groups. We are coming up on our Firefighters Association Oktoberfest. It's a community festival. It's put together completely by volunteers without any real sponsorship funding. It's a wonderful, I invite you all, it's a wonderful Oktoberfest for kids' activities and bounce houses and bratwurst and beer. And it's a very community-friendly event as well as many of the other projects and nonprofits and community events that are supported by the revenue-sharing funds. So I just want you to know even a couple of hundred dollars when it's a nonprofit, not a formal nonprofit, but a community event that has a 501(c)(3) status, makes a huge difference. We're able to get three bounce houses with the support of the community for a small revenue-sharing donation, and that will really benefit the event and the kids and make it so much more fun and increase the visibility and the friendliness of the community and support the firefighters. So, thank you very much. I know you do hundreds of them every year, and they make a huge difference to the small volunteer events and nonprofits. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Patty. Anyone else with public comment? I see no one in the Tahoe City office, so I will go ahead and close the public comment and bring it back for a board member or county executive reports. Any board member reports?
Yeah, I do have a report. Thank you. I wanted to just touch bases very quickly on a couple of things. I had the opportunity the last week in September to attend a Rural Issues Seminar in Washington, DC, working with Steve Frisch from the Sierra Business Council. I put together a white paper that I was able to distribute to 15 senators and a number of other policymakers back in DC focusing on the issues that we, as a county, have identified as priorities in our rural communities. And happy to give more information on that if anyone would like either copies of the white paper or anything else. But was a really good opportunity to get back and really make some compelling arguments about why our rural communities need more attention paid to them. Placer County just one among many in the states. Last Friday, I had the opportunity to attend the Placer Empowering People event up in North Auburn. This is an annual event that Health and Human Services puts on in conjunction with a number of nonprofits and other entities here in Placer County. And it really helps pull together kind of all the disparate services and needs for folks who are both homeless and housed but facing challenges around staying in their homes, getting the appropriate services. I was delighted to see, when I was there, probably 50 to 60 people come through, and I was really only able to be there for the beginning of the event. I'm told that later in the day, there were hundreds of people who came through. And I would say frankly, you know, most of those folks are people who have cars, are housed, but are facing just some significant issues with being able to make ends meet in Placer County. And so it was wonderful to see that event and just wanted to really give a shout-out to Health and Human Services, but also to all our partners in that event. And just, if you guys haven't gone, would encourage you to go next year. It's really very encouraging. That's it. Thank you.
Any other board comments? I attended, over the weekend, the Placer County Animal Services Open House and the Gold Country Wildlife Open House. It was well-attended, very successful. I believe there was a total of 16 adoptions in the Animal Services Department, mostly cats. But that's okay. And then...
Not that there's anything wrong with cats.
I'm allergic to them, so... That's all. And the Gold Country Wildlife Rescue was very interesting with the amount of work they do to preserve wildlife and bring these injured animals back to health and restore them back to their community. I think it was the most successful event for them. They raised a significant amount of donations, which was very much appreciated. And it was great to see how the Animal Services works in conjunction with nonprofits. Any other comments? Do you have anything, Mr.?
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to our 9:05 timed item, Public Works and Facilities. This is a public hearing of Glenwill property in County Service Area 28, Zone 173, Dry Creek. Mr. Andrew Darrow, who, this is his last official board meeting as he is retiring.
That's correct, yeah. So, thank you. Thank you very much, yeah. Placer County's been a great place to work and enjoyed working with all my coworkers and with all of you over the years, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrew.
So, yeah, good morning. As you know, I'm Andy Darrow with Public Works and Facilities. I'm here with Jared Deck, also with Public Works and Facilities, and I'm here to request that your board hold a public hearing to consider annexation of parcel numbers 023-200-023 and 023-200-072 into the boundaries of County Service Area 28, Zone 173, Dry Creek. This property is located north of PFE Road between Willerga Road and Watt Avenue near Roseville in the Dry Creek area, and this is part of the Riola Vineyards specific plan area. HBT of Riola Vineyards is requesting annexation of these two parcels, which totals 178.5 acres, in order to provide sewer service to the proposed 177-lot development. If approved, the applicant is required to pay the annexation fee in effect at the time they choose to make payment. The current annexation fee is $2,723 per unit, and this calculates to a total annexation fee of $481,971 for this 177-lot development. Staff supports this request. In order to move forward, I request that your board hold a public hearing, and at the end of the hearing, adopt the resolution in the staff report to annex this parcel into the boundaries of County Service Area 28, Zone 173, Dry Creek. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, comments from board members? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. I'll open up a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public which should address the board on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Colonel.
It's been moved in second to approve the annexation of Glenwill property in County Service Area 28, Zone 173, Dry Creek. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed, any abstentions? The item is moved. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Oh, did we need a roll call? Oh... Yeah, we need a roll call, sorry.
Duran, Wegant.
Yep.
Yuler.
Yuler.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes, thank you. Now we'll move to our department items. We've got item number 3A, Placer County Sheriff. Adopt a resolution authorizing the Sheriff's Office to offer Christine Sawyer post-retirement employment prior to the California Public Employees Retirement Plan system. This is presented by Mark Giacomin. Mr. Giacomin.
Good morning, Chairman Holmes, members of the board, Mr. Leopold, Ms. Schwab, Mark Giacomin, Placer County Sheriff's Office. Here this morning to talk to you about bringing back retired Newton as a dispatcher prior to a 180-day required wait period for CalPERS. Specifically, I'm asking you to adopt a resolution authorizing the Sheriff's Office to offer Christine Sawyer post-retirement employment prior to the CalPERS-required 180-day wait period. Funding for the position, the extra help position, is included in our budget. Just so, to clarify a little bit, we're currently understaffed in dispatch. Five of our 18 positions are currently vacant, so our dispatchers are right now running about 140 hours of mandatory overtime a week. So this will hopefully release a little bit of that pressure. If you have any questions, I'm free to answer.
Seeing no questions, does anybody in the audience want to speak to this issue? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Colonel.
Moved in second to approve the item 3, a resolution authorizing the Sheriff's Office to offer Christine Sawyer post-retirement employment prior to the California Public Employees Retirement System. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Giacomin. I will now move to item 4, Public Works and Facilities. This is local transportation fund claim to Tahoe-Trucky area regional transit, Placer County Transit, and road maintenance from Placer County Transportation Planning Agency.
Yes, good morning. Thank you. Will Garner with Public Works and Facilities to present this item. This is an annual claim for transportation funds from the local transportation fund from Placer County Transportation Planning Agency, and these are funds that go to fund Placer County Transit, a portion of Tahoe-Trucky area regional transit, and road maintenance. These funds come from a quarter cent of the sales tax, and they are distributed back to the county and the cities based on population, and then these are specifically used, dedicated for transportation, transit, and road maintenance. So we come to you every year, and we ask you to approve this claim, and then it'll go to the PCTPA board. They will hopefully approve it, and then the money will start flowing. It's our main source of funding for transit, the single biggest funds that we get, and it's kind of our cash flow to get the year started. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Otherwise, we're asking you to approve the action we requested, which is to adopt a resolution to execute the claim and authorize the board chairman to sign the claim form.
Okay, any questions from board members? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience wishes to address the board on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Colonel.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the Public Works and Facilities item. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, the item is moved. We'll move to item 4B, update to regional bikeway plan. Oh, there she is. Mr. Hoyt.
Good morning. Chairman Holmes, members of the board, Stephanie Holloway with the Transportation Division of Public Works and Facilities. Happy to present this item before you this morning. It's an update to our Placer County Regional Bikeway Plan. I'm joined by Erin Hoyt with PCTPA, who was the lead on this project. The purpose of the update, thank you. The purpose of this update is really to set the stage for future bicycle improvements as well as strategizing future funding opportunities. A little bit of background for you, the 2002 Placer County Bikeway Plan identified a regional system for commuters and recreational cyclists from Tahoe to Western Placer. That plan also identified a priority list of bikeways for implementation when funding was identified. So it's a lot has changed since 2002, besides just the date. The unincorporated population growth that we've seen, cities have actually adopted their own bicycle plans. Throughout those years, we've had a number of community plans and specific plans that have been approved that also incorporated these future bicycle planning, infrastructure improvements. We've also seen a significant increase in the amount of bicycle activity and interest on our roadways, as well as, most notably, however, the change in the state's funding structure. The 2002 plan was really adopted and focused in alignment with the bicycle transportation account. That, over the years, has changed to what we now call our Active Transportation Program through Caltrans. So we felt like it was time to re-envision this plan and provide an update. So the update focuses on the current practices, such as greater width of bicycle lanes on high-speed roadways, climbing lanes in the foothill areas. We're looking to incentivize connections between the city and the county, as well as between cities, to provide those commute opportunities. Looking to promote opportunities for grant alignment, specifically with the Active Transportation Program. And lastly, looking to support the county's efforts on the Sustainability Plan. These bikeway facilities will be one of a number of tools that we'll use in the future to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and to reduce the amount of vehicle miles traveled on our roadways by providing that mode shift from the car to alternative modes. So with that, we launched a community outreach campaign in June of 2017 via initially an online survey and some targeted email to our constituents. 759 responses were provided based on seven questions that were involved in the survey. On this slide, you can see there's an interactive map that was part of that survey. We did solicit specific comments in the area. The map allowed us to really kind of hone in on what the issues were on different areas throughout the county. We also outreach to a number of our municipal advisory councils, 11 in total, and formed a bicycle advisory committee. This included bicycle riders and advocates throughout the area. Some of the common things, ideas that we heard from the advocates and the bicycle riders were really the need for improved facilities on our narrow roadways, roadway and shoulder maintenance, regional connections, as I stated, between Auburn, Folsom, Grass Valley, Lincoln, and Roseville. And then also connections of our bikeways to recreational opportunities such as Folsom Lake, Lake Tahoe, and our Hidden Falls Regional Park. They were looking to help us prioritize existing gaps in our facilities, and lastly, but not leastly, increase safety. So just to walk you through some of our classifications, these can get kind of technical, but I'll walk you through them here. The Class 1 Shared Path up there on the upper left, that's really a designated facility for pedestrians and bicycles. It's typically separated from the roadway, as you see here on Cook Real Road. The Class 2 facility just to its right is an on-road, typically a one-way facility. You can see in this slide, a little industry shift here. We're providing additional space. We call those buffered bike lanes, if you've heard that term, providing a little bit of extra separation on those high-speed roads between the bicyclists and the vehicles. The Class 3 Bike Route is really a designated route for bicyclists. We're identifying these routes with signage. You can see our Share the Road signage there on the lower left. Really provides the opportunity to notify the driver that there is frequent bicycle usage on the road, and we're looking to increase these bike route in this strategy significantly in the plan. And then, excuse me, the Class 4 facility, this is a new one. I provided a slide. We don't currently have anything like this in Placer County, but you can see, this is sometimes a two-way facility on one side of the road, separated physically, and in this picture, they're showing bollards, but it could be a barrier. We're really trying to incentivize, you've heard the word "cycle track," sometimes they call them "cycle tracks." So this is a separated, protected bikeway facility on-road. So the plan itself has three main components, the network, identifying the network projects, our priority projects, and then identification of some implementation strategies. So with that, I'll just talk about a few of these. Our existing network includes, you can see there, 116 miles of bikeways. We are planning for a 400% increase in those miles, up to 440 miles in the plan. Really, the most significant change is our bicycle route mileage. And the one thing I liked from this slide is really to show you that, you know, there's a number of new facilities in the industry, our shared bike lanes, the buffered bike lanes, and then really kind of a bike route, and we'll talk about this a little bit more later, with a climbing lane idea. So we're really trying to kind of move with those best practices within the industry and promote those. So the separated bike lanes, those Class 4s, really address our higher-volume, higher-speed roadways, and we're looking to implement those as community connectors, and I'll show you a slide with some examples of that. The Class 2 buffered bike lanes is really kind of a smaller overall increase, although we do anticipate kind of in our growth areas or in our community centers to provide those bike lanes and where we have higher speeds, the buffered bike lanes. So also to note, our regionally significant shared-use paths are included in the plan. However, the final determination of those facilities will be governed by the work that Parks is doing with the Parks and Trails Master Plan. We do show the regionally significant ones, although this plan isn't really intended to capture all of those off-road facilities. And then lastly, not reflected on this slide is really the specific plan area improvements that are planned, Placer Vineyards, Bickford Ranch. There's a number of additional bikeway facilities in those specific plans that aren't reflected in these numbers, so... So this is an excerpt out of the plan. This is obviously Western Placer, more of our urban rural interface, I'll call it. Specific plan areas are there in blue, Placer Vineyards, Ranch, Regional University, Bickford Ranch. Also included are incorporated cities. So you can see, there's a lot going on in Western Placer, a lot of planning. Not all the facilities are shown here within the cities, but there's a lot going on. Couple of focus areas to point your attention to, the separated bicycle lanes that I was speaking of. Hopefully, I can... Yeah, so right here, between Lincoln and Sheridan, looking to plan for more of that separated commute facility to incentivize, you know, alternative modes to get people between the rural communities and the cities connected. Another planned area here is on Taylor Road between the Newcastle area and Loomis. Again, looking to try to make those connections and incentivize alternative modes. Lastly, the last Class 4 that we're looking to implement is in the North Auburn area. This is Highway 49, north of the Dry Creek, all the way to the county line. You know, just some community feedback, we've heard about safety in that area, so we're looking to try to incentivize, you know, some enhanced facilities there. The other thing to point out is really the increase in the buffered bike lanes. So Auburn-Folsom Road, you can see we're looking to implement a buffered bike lane, you know, higher speeds along that route, a lot of bicyclists on Auburn-Folsom Road. Sierra College to the north, again, looking to kind of provide a little bit of separation on those higher-speed roadways. And then lastly, I just wanted to point out, North Auburn, really the connections of traditional bike lanes in this area, you know, providing that bike lane, this is Mount Vernon Road right here, providing that designated bike lane to recreational routes. Hidden Falls is out off of Mount Vernon. And then within the northern part of North Auburn, to provide those community connections, we're also working with the DeWitt Master Plan to provide bike lanes within the government center planning. So this is central Placer, more of our rural areas. Predominantly, what we see in this area is recreational riding. Those bicyclists are looking for those longer routes, those larger climbs. That's typically the kind of riding that we see. This is also the area where we're seeing a large increase in our bicycle route facilities. We do also bring in a bike lane connection between the Meta Vista area and Auburn. Lot of opportunity here to make those commute connections as well. So safety is a focus in this area, as well as the other areas, but more predominantly, you know, the limitation of our roadway widths in the central portion of our county, higher speeds, and then the grade differential that we deal with with bicyclists in the foothills. Forest Hill Road has been converted to a bike route with a climbing lane philosophy, so there's a number of issues that go on on Forest Hill Road. One is the differential that I mentioned between the speed of the bike and the uphill area and the speed of the car. So, you know, some safety concerns there. We're looking to try to incentivize, you know, wider shoulder, more of a climbing lane for those bicyclists. And then Forest Hill itself, the plan implements a buffered bikeways in the downtown area. We really recognize that there's a variety of users in Forest Hill itself, kids, older adults as well, and looking to provide more of that low-stress type of facility in the Forest Hill area. That brings us to eastern Placer. The focus of the plan in this area is really those regional routes in and out of the Lake Tahoe Basin, Highway 89 and 267 specifically. TRPA has an Active Transportation Plan, which applies within the basin, and so we default to that, that plan within the basin. But really, leading up to Highway 89 does have a shared-use path that's planned, the Truckee River Trail extension, so looking to partner with them on that facility. Highway 267 is a little bit different for us. There is, again, a shared-use path that is proposed over the Brockway Summit. That path does... That path does, does deviate from the road alignment, and so we want to recognize that there are bicyclists on the road that prefer to be on the road. And so we're looking to try to accommodate a bike lane on Highway two sixty-seven into the future. Again, alternative, kind of promoting those alternative modes. We hear that a lot within the basin and outside of our, with our regional partners. So that brings us to our priority projects. The methodology was really developed based on the current active transportation grant programs. We're looking to come into kind of alignment and strategize on that. It identifies really the most competitive projects for that, federal and state funding, seventy-two projects in all, thirty million dollars. Again, looking to kind of leverage, use the county's resources to try to leverage those federal and state dollars. The priority list does not, however, preclude delivery of non-priority projects within the plan. So there's a number of projects, excuse me, that are not on the priority list but are also in the plan. So the projects list, the priority projects list doesn't preclude, you know, delivery of those projects into the future should funding become available. So this is the priority projects list out of the plan. You can see anything from, you know, the Granite Bay area to West Roseville, Auburn, the Placer Hills Road area, Meta Vista, and so on and so forth. So a lot of projects throughout the county here listed. And again, these are the projects that we're looking to try to partner with some federal and state dollars. And that leads us to implementation of these programs. The plan really promotes bicycle programs and practices. We're seeking funding, looking for opportunities to integrate bikeways into our pavement maintenance practices where feasible. Heard that from the Bicycle Advocates Group. We're also looking to develop some marketing and education outreach programs related to, you know, incentivizing these modes, but also providing for safe facilities. And then as, as is the trend in transportation projects these days, evaluation is really critical. We've talked about an annual report of the facilities and use of the money. We've also talked about a continued outreach efforts with our Bicycle Advisory Committee on an annual or semi-annual basis to continue to seek feedback from those users. And lastly, we want to stay focused on our five Es, education, encouragement, enforcement, engineering, and then evaluation. So with that, I'll maybe turn it over to Aaron. He can talk about the PCTPA coordination and what the PCTPA has done with the plan so far.
Morning, Mr. Horry.
Thank you. Aaron Hoyt from the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency. And I just want to thank you and your staff for the countless hours they put into assisting us develop this plan for Placer County, for the unincorporated Placer County. This was a Caltrans Rural Planning Grant Assistance Program that we received money to develop this program and update it from the original two thousand and two version. So again, a lot of work went into updating this, understanding what's out there today on the ground. All the different community plans have been developed and updated over the years. So a lot of work, again, went into this. For purposes of the grant, we at the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency's Board of Directors, we had reviewed a draft plan back in April this year, and then in June, we had accepted the report and plan as a draft final, pending any last-minute comments from the public received at that meeting. And following up to that, on June thirtieth, we submitted it to Caltrans to complete the requirements of the grant, and we also received word from Caltrans that the plan was accepted and final. So this is really the last step of presenting this to the Placer County Board of Supervisors for adoption that then county staff and the different departments can utilize to implement these projects over the, over the future. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
That'll get us to our action items. So we ask that your board consider adoption of a resolution to approve the update to the Placer County Regional Bikeway Plan. Any questions that you're here to happy to answer?
Supervisor Ullrich has. Yeah, I'm wondering if you could speak to the distinction between this, the bikeway plan, and what we have within our community plans, and that is, we all have our regional trails focused within our community plans. And so how does this work in some cases in concert with, in other cases ignoring what are priorities set within the community plans for trails and connections, those kinds of things?
Yeah, great question. So one, that is one thing that we've been coordinating with the Community Development Resource Agency to make sure that we have consistency between this plan and our community plans and our general plan. So what I will say is they work together. This plan is an all-encompassing of those facilities. The specific, or the community plans really get into more of that granular detail of projects. This plan is really, you know, meant to be kind of more of that regional plan, providing those regional connections countywide. But each community plan may have some additional specificity. So we are looking to bring forward an item to the Planning Commission very soon, working with community development on that one, and then to your board to make any edits that are necessary to bring the two, or this plan into alignment with those plans.
And I noticed that when looking at the list of priority projects, each of the priority projects would appear to be contained within existing right-of-way on roadways, possibly with the exception of, I don't know how wide the right-of-way is on Highway eighty-nine and the improvement that we're looking to do with extending that multi-use trail from where it ends at Squaw Valley on out to the county line. But the vast majority, well, the rest of the projects all seem to be on-road type projects.
Correct, yeah. Most of them are on-road, except for those, some of those shared-use paths. What I will say is, as we bring projects forward right-of-way, will definitely be looked at. I think, you know, trying to incentivize, you know, smarter use of our existing right-of-way, we'll definitely be prioritizing that. But there may be projects that come forward where additional right-of-way may be necessary.
Okay. I guess what I'm getting at is, given the, the comments that were made earlier in our public comment, which probably would have been more relevant here than in public comment, we all have, within our various community plans, we all have different priorities that are left up largely to how we want to spend our dollars within our community plan areas based on our impact fees that are collected for those purposes of those more community-oriented improvements, as opposed to this, which is designed to be more regional, not just looking at county's facilities and improvements, but how those then connect to our partners in the cities, which is why this is a project that was actually driven by PCTPA in looking at this study.
Yeah, correct. And I guess the one thing I will highlight as well is that the bikeway plan itself, although we did incorporate those shared-use paths, really only captured those that were regionally significant, as you mentioned.
Right.
You know, the intent is to provide those connections and to try to incentivize, you know, future funding opportunities as much as we can.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you both for the presentation. Following up on some of Kirk's questions and comments, and I think it's too bad that Mr. Cutler didn't stay because I think what you presented is germane to some of the issues that he raised in his letter that he brought in front of us in his public comments. I think it's really critically important to note that in the staff report, we recognize that the regional bikeway plan focuses its effort specifically on on-road facility types. However, many regionally significant off-road facilities are also identified in the plan. And I think that may have been lost in translation, reading of Mr. Cutler's letter. You know, so while he believes that our yes vote would send a message to go play in the street, I think our focus is on the street in this case. We have bike paths on roads in Placer County, throughout the county, and we all recognize they're critically important, whether they're actually on the road or separated from the road. I think some of the comments as well in the staff report regarding other county efforts such as Parks and Trails Master Plan may get more to the concern that he raises in his letter about the, the trail in Tree Lake Village and in what context and in what state of being that actually exists. What I, what I would agree with him on is, to my understanding, a Class One trail does not exist on that location. And if our report is showing that a Class One trail does actually exist there, we should make sure that that is reflected appropriately in our presentation. And I'm going to ask staff to just verify the status of that trail and make sure that it is reflected appropriately in whatever documents we have that are public facing.
Are you happy to do that?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Public Works and Planning are intending to come back to our board to have a conversation in November about this item.
Seeing none? Anyone in Tahoe? Seeing none? Bring it back to board for action.
Move the resolution.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to adopt a resolution to approve the update to the regional bikeway plan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposing, any abstentions, the item is moved. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Horry. Now, we will move to our nine-thirty timed item, Community Development Resource Agency, Western Placer County Affordable Workforce Housing Fees. I want to let everybody know that this is not an action item today. We are here to provide direction, if any, and we certainly wish to hear all of your concerns and comments on this very important item. Supervisor Montgomery, did you have?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Holmes. Given that we are missing one of the county supervisors today, I'm going to suggest that we do move forward with this item. We do have the presentation. We do take public comment, but I think it needs to come back to the board when we have a full component of our board and have all five supervisors present. This is a discussion item that has impacts in each of the districts, and I think particularly in District One, just given the terrain and topography of Placer County. So I would suggest that while we do move forward with this item today, we actually bring it back when we have a full component of the board. I would suggest, if possible, that we bring it back as soon as possible, which I think would be the November meeting, as a timed item. And I'm just kind of opening it up to my board to ask for your thoughts on this.
Is your intent to bring it back as an action item or for discussion?
No, I think, again, for discussion, to, to provide direction, I think the, the direction and the input from the District One supervisor would be critical to the conversation.
Okay. Supervisor Ullrich, your light is on or?
No, it's from the last one, sir.
Okay.
Is that a problem for staff?
Okay, thank you. Then we'll proceed. Ms. Purvines, Mr. Pacetti?
All right, I'll, I'll jump in, I guess, and say the purpose today is to obtain board direction, hopefully, on establishing affordable housing fee for specific residential development. Really, there are three questions. One is, should the fees be allowed for certain residential development? Two, if so, what type of development should it apply to? And three, what level should the fees be set at? We're basing our recommendations on the existing board policy and direction that staff has given us at past board hearings. Just want to emphasize, this is really, today's fee is a very small piece of the overall program that we have for housing. It's a small subset of residential development that we're looking at today. Fees are not the solution to housing affordability. If they were, this would have been fixed a long time ago. I think we all recognize the obvious irony of assessing a fee on homes to make homes more affordable. Doesn't quite make sense. However, this being an extremely complex issue, it's a statewide issue, and there aren't simple solutions. There are many components. Residential development is only one component of this, and we've been addressing that in the past. However, we haven't looked at things like the non-residential development. When a Walmart or a Target comes in with relatively low-paying, low-wage jobs, they create a need for affordable housing. We haven't addressed that and haven't dealt with that issue. State and local regulations, development mitigation fees, there are a lot of aspects to this. We are, as Jennifer Merchant mentioned a couple of weeks ago, at the overall housing program, we're looking at this from a wide array of topics and components. We are trying to tackle the bigger-picture items. We're looking at the regulatory burden, trying to change what we can locally. The state is going to be another problem that we'd like to, to work on. There are, we're creating more housing options as we come forward, tiny homes, the accessible, or the accessory dwelling units, those kinds of things. We're looking at bringing together an investment strategy, and there's a lot of things we can do with legislative advocacy. We just found out this morning, well, as Jennifer Merchant mentioned a couple of weeks ago, it looks like we're on track to collect SB two funding locally, in the unincorporated area only, of about five million dollars. Well, we found out the draft plan from HCD and giving some of that money back, we're looking to get about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for planning the first year. We don't think that's appropriate. We think there are other things that we can do. We'd like to spend our time on that. And so I don't want to get off on all these other things that we're, we're looking at, but I just want to emphasize, what we're doing today is a very small piece of the overall program. With that, Shawna Purvines, our principal planner and head of our housing unit in Cedra.
Good morning. Good morning. Shawna Purvines, Community Development Resources Agency. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the Western Placer County Nexus Base Affordable Workforce Housing Fee Study that was completed. You'll have a very similar presentation on October twenty-third in Tahoe that will discuss the eastern study that was completed at that time. So the purpose of the study was to consider establishing a Western Placer County Affordable Workforce Housing Fee. The study determined the maximum justifiable fee on new market rate residential development in Western Placer County, and it demonstrated the nexus between new development and the increase in demand for affordable housing. So just a little bit of background. The contract was approved in two thousand and fifteen with Hansford Economic Consulting as a subconsultant to Mintier Harnish to provide the Nexus Base Housing Fee Study. Catherine Hansford is here today if you have any questions about the study. She'd be happy to speak to those as well. The study did determine that maximum justifiable fee that could be adopted either as an impact or an in-lu fee. And on August eighth, two thousand and seventeen, as part of the annual housing work program, the board did receive a presentation from Catherine on the, the housing fee study. In January twenty, January twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen, staff actually initiated an update to that study because the data that was collected as part of the two thousand and fifteen effort was dated. The basis of the fee was to determine, or to show, the development of new residential land uses will generate the additional need for affordable housing. The fee is a mitigation for the impact of increased demand for affordable housing and calculated the number of income-qualified worker households generated by that new development using a finance gap study. So this was not a full cost of construction. It was using the gap analysis. The study used the affordability gap methodology, which is an industry-standard methodology. So the purpose we're here today is to obtain some board direction on establishing that, the, the Western fee. Again, this is not an action item today. On that, August eighth, two thousand and seventeen, the board did generally provide some direction to staff that the in-lu fee should be used as a last resort. What we're hoping is to find out a little bit more of what that last resort means. So should the board want to proceed with the adoption of a fee, staff is suggesting the following parameters for that last resort. First, that no fee option be provided to specific plans or larger general plan amendment projects. It is determined that these projects generally have enough land to be able to construct the housing units in that plan area. But to allow an affordable housing fee is an option for residential projects when an affordable housing obligation is less than five affordable units, or what we're calling smaller projects. To set that fee at five ninety-five per building square foot, it says plus the three percent, that was an earlier draft, actually, the three percent is built into the five ninety-five, so that would be the fee amount. So just a really quick example here, if you had a forty-lot subdivision, this would actually fall underneath the small project description. You could either build four units, as shown there in red, or you could do forty times, or the number of units times square feet times the affordable housing fee. In this case, forty times, we did an average of twenty-five hundred square feet for the housing units, times, and it would be five ninety-five, or a total fee of five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for a project. So staff is recommending an exemption to this. We found that not all general plan amendments are equal, and some of the general plan amendments, particularly those that are moving towards other housing element goals, could be exempt from this fee. from this fee. For example, a general plan, community plan, area plan amendment to medium or high density residential for the purpose of constructing eight or more units, for the purpose of developing a mix of housing types that address an array of affordability, development that is on an infill site, as defined by the Public Resource Code, which is generally sites that are less than five acres and have substantial development on most sides, or development that's within a transit priority area. All of these are other objectives in our housing element, and so the board could consider exempting the, the fee for these types of projects. A comparison of how fees are handled in other jurisdictions in the region, you can see in orange, that's the proposed under the 595. Elk Grove actually doesn't impact fees, so they apply it across the board for all projects. And Davis does charge a 75,000 per affordable unit plus the 25 inclusionary requirement, which is kind of equals to about that 18. It's a little hard to get apples to apples because everybody does a little bit differently, but this does give you kind of an idea of the fees that are collected throughout the region. Roseville, we've actually heard, based on public comment and interest in the county, looking at the Roseville model for fees, Rose, based on communication with Roseville, they do, just like the county, have the 10%, affordable units requirement as part of development. They rarely, they do not have a housing fee ordinance, and they rarely allow the payment of in lieu fees. When it is permitted is based on the full cost of construction of that housing unit. In January 2016, the city provided us that at that time, the cost of the unit would have been about $115,000. So there's a few options the board can consider. One is to not adopt a fee, at least not at this time. If the board chooses this, the county will go on negotiating on a case by case basis when projects that come forward and are subject to the policies in the housing element, just as the county has been doing. The board could adopt a fee, and if they do, if you do choose to, to move forward with the adoption of fee, we will need your input on adopting a fee level. You could set it at the maximum amount, or you could set it at the maximum amount consistent with our 10%, which is number 2A, and that is the 595, which is what staff is recommending. The fee also could be set at 50% of the maximum, or any fraction thereof of the total. 50% seems to put us more comparable to other jurisdictions in the region, with the exception, of course, of the city of Davis. You could also set the fee to only collect on behalf of rental. The current fee actually was calculated to address the impact of both single family and multifamily. If you wanted to just address the impacts of multifamily, the fee could be slightly less, or the 423. The fourth option is, staff's not recommending at this time. We feel like it probably warrants additional analysis and for sure, some additional public outreach, but some of the other options the board could consider is adopting a fee for projects based on the full cost of construction, similar to the Roseville model. Adopt an impact fee for all residential land uses, similar to the Elk Grove model, or adopt a Western Placer non-residential impact fee. Currently, non-residential is assessed a fee on the eastern side, but it is not on the western side. So conclusion, next steps, if the board does want to proceed with the adoption of the fee, staff would need to return with an ordinance that regulates how the fee would be applied, and a resolution that approves the Nexus Study for the establishment of the fee schedule and sets the initial amount of the fee and the ongoing escalators. With that, I'll stop.
Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, just Shawna, it, it seemed like there was sort of general agreement that this could come back in November when all five of us are here for additional input and comments. When this comes back, can you make sure all the slides are updated to the appropriate dollar amounts?
Absolutely.
Percentages? Thank you. I think that'll just help in the conversation.
Could you bring the slides back up? And then, there was a slide there that had all the, the graph that had all the different jurisdictions, what their... It was one with the colors on it.
It's getting there. There you go.
So you mentioned that Elk Grove is, did they include commercial in the impact fee? Are all those, is that part of their?
I believe they did. They have a full impact fee.
Okay. And then if you go to the Roseville?
There's a different amount for the commercial because it's based on a different square footage, but yeah.
That's kind of the average? The four?
That's residential, that we're looking at there. Yeah.
Okay. Then go to the one with the Roseville model. 2016, of course, that's a couple of years ago. It was $115,000 per unit. Is that for apartments? It doesn't seem like it's very much for...
I, I believe, you know, I'd have to go back and look at the correspondence. I believe that was for, for apartments on theirs. Yeah.
Yeah, it just makes sense. That's probably, we need shelter, and maybe we need more apartments. That's what I'm thinking. All right. Any other?
I, I did have one other question. Could you go back to the bar charts? Thank you. So, you know, obviously, there's some pretty significant differing amounts there. Do you know when the city of Elk Grove, city of Sacramento, Sacramento County, West Sacramento, and the city of Davis last updated their fee structure?
So they, they update annually with the CIP. I believe the studies, at least for Sacramento and West Sacramento, were 2013, there was a 2015 in the city of Sacramento that updated some fees. So, oh, they're, they're all three, four years old.
Okay, so they're reasonably time correlated to our analysis?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Euler?
Yeah, just starting with that, the fees in Davis could be six times that. It wouldn't matter because Davis doesn't build anything. Davis didn't annex any new property from, for, for almost 10 years into the city for residential construction, and almost half of their standing inventory in Davis is already rental inventory anyway. So to have Davis on there is completely worthless. It's, it's comparing apples with unicorns because there's nothing in Davis that's happening. So looking at the rest of the area around us that is developing, and of course, knowing that Placer County actually leads the region in building permits issued, clearly, the rest of the, the market has settled at about half of what it is that, that we are proposing. So my questions go more to the issue of what steps are we taking, or are we prepared to take? And Mr. Pedretti referenced this earlier, in terms of first, looking at our own house, if you will, and what it costs for somebody to deliver a product into the marketplace in the county, based on our current fee structure. But more importantly, I think, and one of the things that I've harped on for years, is just time to market. How long does it take to get a project actually approved and built in Placer County? And, and we've used a comparison with Roseville, and talking about Roseville's ability to deliver affordable housing using their inclusionary zoning. And yet, I look at how many specific plans Roseville has approved and built in the time that we've been talking about Placer Vineyards since 1994. And Roseville's population has at least doubled, closing in on tripled in that timeframe that we've been talking about building one project. And so, you know, from the standpoint of actually delivering product to the marketplace, and what that does to increase the opportunities for affordable everything, let alone just affordable housing. Obviously, we, I've contended for quite some time that we have a number of things that we should be doing, and thankfully, I think Supervisor Wigan's visionary leadership on our Placer County Conservation Plan is a big step in the right direction because then we will have defined mitigation, which right now is unknown. When somebody goes in to develop something, we have no idea what their mitigation requirements are going to be, and, and timeframe from project approvals to permit issuance. So two huge unknowns right now that currently rest solely on the back of the developer, the home builder, we will have addressed. But I think there are a number of other things that we can be looking at, and I would encourage us, inasmuch as we're reaching out to the industry, to say, this is the direction that we think as a county we might need to go or like to go. I, I think we need to broaden that reach. We have representatives of the, the faith community here. We have representatives of different foundations here and all the rest. Are we engaging them in these conversations to say regionally, how are we going to address this issue? How are we working, if at all, right now, with our incorporated cities within the unincorporated county, or together with the unincorporated county, to figure out how we solve this problem? Because clearly, there are sections of this county that are not going to be as easy to deliver affordable housing as there are parts perhaps of the incorporated cities, just by virtue of cost of infrastructure runs, all those other things. That we're, we're talking greenfield development out west, you have bigger price tags associated with getting infrastructure out there. Whereas, when you do have urban infill opportunities, can we as a county be looking to partner with Lincoln, Roseville, Rockland for those urban infill opportunities and give our developers in the unincorporated area a chance to partner with the cities for providing workforce housing be it in the incorporated cities as opposed to in the unincorporated areas where the cost for providing infrastructure is much less in those incorporated cities, just by virtue of runs and all the rest? So I, I obviously have always, this is no surprise to staff, had an issue with, with just hanging a fee on the new home builders. As I've said, you know, going back years, food, shelter, and clothing are the three necessities of life, and yet I don't recall anybody turning to Rayleigh's and saying, you have to provide 10% of your food stock at an affordable cost, and we'll tell you what that affordability means. And they don't say the same thing to Macy's or Nordstrom, you have to provide 10% of your clothing to, at an affordable price. Housing is the only thing that we look to and say, you have to provide this. And I, I, what other market mechanisms are there? With, with food and certain other essentials, we've taken a more holistic approach, be it at the state or federal level. Is that the way that we need to address this? So I still have, as we discussed privately last week, still have a number of, of concerns about moving forward with a fee, especially a fee this high, because as I've said before, I don't believe the solution to affordable housing for some is making housing less affordable for others by hanging that kind of a fee on every front door. And so I encourage us to continue looking at what are those things that we can do on a broader scale to drive down total costs of delivering inventory into the marketplace.
Thank you, supervisor Montgomery.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with a lot of what Supervisor Euler brought up. I think in terms of that conversation around how we could potentially partners with cities, there's some implications there for us meeting our obligations that we really need to flesh out, because what we don't want to see happen is us bringing dollars or assets to the table that don't create credit for us under the RENA program. So certainly, we need to be very cognizant of that.
And I believe that, you know, the cities have more zoning that allows density in their cities as planned out, so which, which the zoning in Placer County is not quite as robust. On our last meeting, September 25th, under the Housing Program Work Plan, component four is to engage with cross-section of stakeholders to develop and support regional housing solutions. So has, has the staff engaged with the cross-section of the community at, at any level?
We've kicked it off, as we talked about on the 25th. We've, we've spent about the last six months with some initial outreach, both whether it's at forums, or municipal advisory committees, or through the, the survey tool that we've used. We, we still have more to do, for sure, as we move forward to both look to implement the housing element that we have today, and also as we look forward to the next housing element, we're going to need, need to engage that, that cross group.
Is there any intent to engage with, for example, the Placer Community Foundation, Business Building Industry Association, the faith-based community, senior community, in a combined meeting where they, we can hash this out and see if we understand each other's needs and what their, what their proposals are? Has that been addressed? Is that something that we can do?
Absolutely.
All right. I'd like, I'd like to see that happen. All righty, Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, and following up on, on Chairman Holmes' comments, one of the arguments that I've heard from the building industry, and that I think has some legitimacy, is the, the wisdom of basically hanging this issue specifically on residential construction. And so I do think we need to expand the conversation to really sort of look at the other kinds of development and construction in the county that does frankly, drive more jobs in many instances at lower, lower wages, and figure out what that intersection is. I, I think we are not going to get to a solution on this problem if we don't all figure out a way to be part of the solution. And I think frankly, just hanging this on the residential development community solely is not the answer. They, they have an obligation, we have an obligation, the commercial and industrial development community has an obligation around this as well. So I think in conjunction with Supervisor Holmes' comments around pulling some kind of meeting together, we need to make sure that we have the commercial entities at that table as well.
And I think we need to take a closer look at what's been successful in the unincorporated area, and I'm thinking of North Auburn. We have Colonial Village up behind Bel Air, we have Terracina Oaks, which is behind Big Five Sporting Goods, Snowcap View Apartments. We have the de facto affordable housing in Auburn Greens, and there's several other apartment complexes that are privately, privately owned, but they're somewhat affordable. And that area out there is ripe for that. We have all the, we have transportation options, although they're not robust. We have restaurants, job, we have hospital, we have medical care out there, and the services for the county. So I think that's an area that needs to be maybe expanded. There are more space available for those type of units. Any other comments before I open up the public comment? Are you done with your presentation? Okay. Now, we will open it up to the audience. And so I see Mr. Jeff Short coming forward.
Thank you, Chair Holmes and members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Jeff Short, representing the North State BIA. As you know, California generally, and Placer County in particular, are suffering the effects of a massive housing shortage. The lack of a, the lack of available housing has created an even higher demand for affordable housing. So as the home building community, we are as motivated as anyone to solve these twin problems. The most important step that can be taken in that direction is the construction of new housing units. So this time, I want to thank Director Steve Pedretti, Shawna Purvines, and the rest of SEDRA in their efforts in streamlining and updating county processes, digitizing information. This has all had a positive influence on the speed and ease of development and helps our membership activate, or achieve their goal of producing more houses. However, as, as you've no doubt heard, the fees in Placer County are still very high. Design standards are rigorous and expensive. Adding an additional $12,000 to the already, at a low, low estimate, $70,000 to $80,000 that developers pay for a 2,000 square foot house will only make those houses even less affordable and put more people into the pool of those who need housing assistance. Even more disruptive of the industry's ability to create more housing is the lack of opportunity to even pay those fees. The staff report policy allows for very little flexibility in when a home builder can opt into those payments and puts the burden on the industry to, to develop new homes below their market value. As an industry, we acknowledge and welcome the opportunity to help with the affordable housing crisis. That's why the local building community supports HomeAid, which for the past 20 years has been creating beds in our region for those in need. Through this program, local home builders contribute their time, expertise, materials, and money to building shelter for those who otherwise might not have any. Over the, over $2 million has been invested by BIA members in Placer County alone. And now we're willing to take the next step. Already, we've begun our own outreach, the Placer Community Foundation, local chambers of commerce, Placer County Association, and Realtors, to, to start the process of developing a soli- and Realtors to, to start the process of developing a solution that makes sense both at a business level and a human level. We have repeatedly expressed our hope to staff that the county will join in this partnership. Ultimately, anything this group advances will not be effective if government is not also a major component in the decision-making process. That is why we respectfully ask the staff to give, or sorry, ask you to give staff direction not to pursue this policy recommendation, but rather to work with the wider community group to develop a community-wide solution. Important steps have already been taken by the county. We've begun the process of identifying key sites and county-owned property that can help with the situation. Some of the ideas that we've begun to explore have already been mentioned in the discussion today. And the BIA stands ready and willing to take the lead on this group, should that be the will of the board. And we'd be happy to make periodic progress reports and keep you up to date on our efforts. At this point, we again, we ask you to give staff direction to work within the framework, this framework that we're proposing, instead of pursuing the policy recommendation. Thank you. We're looking, we're looking forward to continue working with Placer County on this important issue.
Three minutes. I'm impressed.
I got it.
Good job. Who else wants to address the board on this item? Don't all come up at once.
Don't be shy.
Don't say that. I don't think they are. Morning.
Morning Chairman Holmes, members of the board. Thanks for the opportunity to speak today. I had a couple of, my name is Todd Chambers. I work with Anthem United Homes. We're a residential developer, home builder, and based in Roseville, but Placer, West Placer County, doing work here as well.
What's the name of the organization?
Anthem United Homes.
Anthem Homes.
So I, I had a couple of prepared remarks, but those words have kind of already been said. I think you, you fairly painted a picture of what our industry is dealing with when it comes to costs and increasing those costs and the burden that gets placed on the home building industry. But I thought I'd share with you a little example of a project that we looked at in, in Western Placer County, in the Penrin area recently. We weren't able to make that project work primarily because of, of costs and not just affordable housing fee costs, but just costs in general. Fifty-four units in the Penrin area. I was looking at Table A6 out of the, the Nexus study, and I think they did a pretty good job of estimating fees and looking at direct construction costs. But I think they underestimated land development costs and a few other things associated with what it takes to build a community of that size and nature. So we look at, how much can we sell a house for in a market? And so then, once you kind of set that threshold as to what people would pay for a home, what are the costs that we incur when we go to build that house? So direct construction costs in this Nexus study were roughly, let's say, $80 to $82 a square foot. I think that's pretty accurate. But the land development costs were estimated at around $50,000 to $65,000 a lot. The project we were looking at was closer to about $135 to $137,000 per lot. When you look at all the improvements that you need to do to a site like that, whether it's dirt you need to move, or rock you need to blast, or infrastructure you need to improve, and then the fees associated with that project were closer to probably around $86,000 to $87,000 a home. So if you were to add another $12,000 on top of that, it just, it makes it very challenging for, for our industry and, and guys like us to, to build a product that arguably is not an affordable home by any means, but certainly a house that's relatively moderate, let's say, you know, $600 to $700,000 in Western Placer County is not an uncommon number, especially in the Penrin area. And so increases in costs, the things like lumber and steel, just since the beginning of this year, labor costs for improved benefits for contractors and insurance, the demand for labor, it's, it's very challenging to get contractors to work here on a consistent basis, and they will ask you to pay for it, if that's in fact the case. So I just wanted to give you kind of a small example of, of what we face as an industry, and obviously the burden of adding another large fee on top of that to accommodate affordable housing just exacerbates the problem for us. So we, we appreciate the opportunity to work with staff. I've known Steve and Shawna for some time. They're, they're really good at what they do, so we hope to continue that effort moving forward. So thanks for your time.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned the Penrin project, the 54 houses, houses.
Yes.
Was that the, that was approved initially as 150 apartments? Is that the one between Taylor Road and Penrin Road?
That's correct.
Yeah. So that project now is in advance? It's?
Yes, yeah. We, we, we worked pretty hard on trying to make it work with the landowner and, you know, they have a threshold on their end, is what they can afford to sell the land for. But when it came down to what it takes to, to actually build that site, it had some other issues associated with it. It had some dirt that needed to be remediated, things like that are, I'll call that are uncommon, but not necessarily in that area. You know, it's just pesticides and things from, from past ag use.
Yeah.
So those just add costs to a, a project like that. It makes it infeasible for, at least for guys like us.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Laduka.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Marcus Laduka, 3200 Douglas Boulevard. I just have a few comments today. One regarding the slide on Roseville. I've been a professional for 32 years, 29 in this county. I've entitled five specific plans in Roseville and worked in five others. They do not have a strict 10% obligation. In fact, in two of the last three plan areas, there was no affordable housing obligation on for-sale housing. It was all placed on rental sites. Getting to the point that Mr. Pedretti brought up and that other board members have, have echoed relative to, you don't want to make a bunch of housing more expensive to make housing less expensive for a few. To give you an idea, even if you use the numbers that are in Table A11 of the Nexus study where you have a gap of $90,000 per, per house for LDR, you know, if you have a 100-unit subdivision and you're going to have 10% affordable, that gap is equals to $900,000 in construction costs. We think that number is actually about half of what it really is, given what we're seeing in the marketplace. But that means that all the other 90 homes get to be more expensive by 10,000. If you go to the four-bedroom and you have 100 and basically $200,000 cap, it means every single other house, the 90% that aren't placed without obligation, increase in, in cost by $22,000. Because let's face it, builders and developers do not pay fees. Home buyers pay fees, office tenants pay fees, retail tenant pays fees. The builders and developers don't pay those. So it is a, if it's a $20,000 hit on a home buyer, that's $4,000 more in a down payment and $16,000 more of a loan that they get to pay interest on. To get it to Mr. Euler's comment about the process itself, between 1994, when Placervaneyards formally kicked off, and 2007, City of Roseville, for example, approved Highland Reserve North, North Roseville Specific Plan Phase 1, Stone Ridge Specific Plan, North Roseville Specific Plan Phase 2, North Roseville Specific Plan Place, Phase 3, and West Park, or West Plan. All but the last were almost completely built out during that same time period. I would like to note, in terms of the idea of having a stakeholders' group, Mr. Wigan, in leading the board many years ago, as, had as part of the PCCP, a stakeholders' group created where every disparate interest that could be put together got together and worked through issues. I've sat on that stakeholders' group for 14 and a half years, to the point where, when Lauren Clark received his award from the Placer Land Trust, they actually had me and Terry Davis from the Sierra Club together, sitting together, jointly singing praises. And to say that that was an odd couple is an understatement. I didn't think they were ever going to get me and Terry in a, a picture together. But there's evidence. There's photographic evidence. That group, we did a lot of, it was a lot of heavy lifting. It was a lot. I mean, we reviewed literally thousands of pages of documents. But that group helped come up with a solution that everyone could live with. And I think that that, we haven't had that here. We just haven't. We have a couple workshops here and there. We have individual meetings, but we have not had that. Instead, we're dumping it on the board's lap and saying, "You decide." I think there's a better way of doing this. I think the idea of having a stakeholders' group that isn't at public meetings or working through the details of things, of costs, and what can actually work, and then come to you with that result, I think is the way to approach this, this process. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have a question.
Yep.
The stakeholder group for the PCCP, how long did that take to come to some kind of conclusion?
Well, we've been working to get, when, the, early on the process, and of course, a lot of this was driven by federal agencies, so there are delays and trying to get even issues resolved. But in terms of us coming together, there was early, fairly early agreement from a number of the major interests in that group on sort of the approach.
Okay.
The details have obviously taken a long time, and these two gentlemen on my far right have spent, I think, far too much time of their lives over the last number of years on this. But there was general agreement on what the approach was, what the philosophy. And that helped then drive the details. But again, that was, a lot of that was outside of the county's control or the stakeholders. You have federal agencies that, from year to year, couldn't agree on things.
Well, I, I like the idea of a stakeholder group, but I just don't want to take it as long.
No, and, and frankly, since I will probably be asked by the BIA to sit on such a group, I am not interested in serving on another group for 14 and a half years, at all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Next. Good morning.
Good morning Chair and Board. My name is Mike Whipple. I work for a firm called Development Financial Advisory, DFA for short. We were tasked with doing a technical review, a preliminary technical review of the Nexus study prepared for the affordable housing fee. And we identified a few assumptions that create what we call like a false need, a false demand. And, and those center around a few, few of the major assumptions that drive the overall fee amount. Those being amount of income being spent on retail expenditures within the localized economy. The, the analysis assumes that upwards of 50 to 55% of retail spending from these homeowners' income is spent on these retail needs. Well, if you take into account that they also assume 30 to 35% of those, those incomes are spent on household costs, it doesn't leave a reasonable expectation that there's going to be 50 to 55% spent on those retail expenditures when you take into account things like taxes, things like retirements, and those other types of items that aren't accounted for, like health, healthcare costs. Additionally, one of the major flaws that we identified in the study was that it captures all retail spending within the entire western part of the county. It doesn't take into consideration anything like a capture rate. That is a major indication of where those retail dollars are actually being spent. And so what the analysis does is it captures resale spending that's occurring within the localized communities like Rockland, Lincoln, and Roseville. You know, those are where a lot of the retail dollars are being spent. We have this leakage that happens from the county, you know, it even happens between jurisdictions like Lincoln to, to Roseville. So a lot of those dollars that are actually identified and calculated in terms of creating the demand in the Nexus study may be captured inside the cities of Roseville, Rockland, and other incorporated areas. And so, you know, this false needs, you know, it generates a significantly high fee, which is in proportion to some of those other local jurisdictions that you've seen. You know, when taken into consideration also what's happened with regular retail spendings over the last five to 10 years, where we've seen the amount of retail spending from online sales increased dramatically over the last few years, and that's not accounted for. And when you do a Nexus study, you have to account for all relevant factors. And that, the, the impact of online sales is a relevant factor that needs to be captured within the Nexus study and identified and talked about. Additionally, there's the concept that every, every low-income worker makes a low-income household, that, that, that they pair up together. And so every, a low-income worker marries a low-income worker and creates a low-income household. We know that's actually not true, right? So that's another false need that's created inside the Nexus study, you know? And, and what we found is that there's empirical data that actually suggests that the people that are taking these entry-level jobs, and they truly are entry-level jobs, that they are not people seeking housing, that they're actually teenagers or young 20-year-olds that are still living at home with their parents. As most of us know, who have 18 to 20-year-olds, they're still living at home with us, right? So they're not actually looking for households. I just got one more comment.
Sure.
You know, one of the other things that, that's identified is, is, is that, that that's all this need is created, all these new households, all these new low-income households are being created. And what we're really, what happens in the actual marketplace is that we're creating additional employment opportunities for existing residents who have houses already, that they go from part-time to full-time employment, or they just now have the opportunity to enter the workforce. And that's not actually identified and talked about in the Nexus analysis. So I support what the BIA is talking about in terms of identifying a work group and to look at this holistically and identify a better funding solution than charging a fee. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. LaRue, good morning.
Chairman Holmes and other members of the board and Mr. Leopold. I'm Janice LaRue, the Executive Director of First Five Placer, and I'm a Colfax resident of unincorporated Placer County. And I spoke to you last, at last meeting and applauded you for your efforts and really taking this, this issue seriously. We really appreciated it. It's of major concern to families with young children in this county. And, you know, we've been raising alarms about really the importance of young children and families in this county. We've been talking a lot about the need now for housing, but we've really got to look also at the future housing needs. We are growing old fast. People talk about the Silver tsunami and, in terms of the US as a whole, by 2020, about a third of people in the US are going to be over 65. California as a whole is young. Only about 30% of California is going to be 65 in 2020. In Placer, 40% of our population. We're one of the fastest-growing gray counties in the, in the states. By 2050, which is not far off, 40% of people in California are going to be 65 and older. Placer, 50%, 50%. So this isn't like a Silver tsunami. We should be like a Silver tsunami hazard zone, right? We're getting old really fast. And we, you know, in terms of, in terms of funding, in terms of living here, half of our families live below the median income in Placer County. We have a really great standard of living here, but families are really adversely impacted. Nearly two-thirds of our families cannot afford to buy a house. Yeah, they're, the 20-year-olds are living at home because they can't afford to move out. 17% of our youngest children live in single-parent households. Those working at minimum wage can't live, can't afford a house. In fact, they can very, very rarely afford rent. Firefighters might be able to afford a house at an entry level at $240,000. A service worker, your waiters, cashiers, your CNAs, your LPNs, preschool teachers, security guards, these are not people who can afford housing in Placer County. And we have to consider who's going to buy our houses when we retire, who are going to be our firefighters, who are going to be our barbers, our mechanics, who's going to work in the grocery stores? The answer is our families. Our families with young children that we need to stay here and grow up. So we really advocate for building mixed-use affordable homes. And I agree, fees are not the way to do it. We need to do what Roseville's done. We need to build the houses. And I totally agree in working toward a community solution, but in the end, it lands here. And it is your decision. And we really trust that you'll make the right decision for children and families and for the future of Placer County. And so we ask that you, again, prioritize housing without a fee in lieu. And we support, I really totally agree with Supervisor Euler. We've got to do what we can to make housing costs affordable and the process quick to get these people in housing as soon as possible. So thank you for your time and your consideration in this matter.
Thank you, Janice. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you Chairman Holmes and Supervisors. Rob Smith with Homes by Town. We are a home builder in Sacramento area, specifically, we're building in Reala Vineyards and Morgan Ranch. And I, I wanted to echo the comments that have been stated by my industry colleagues, but I also wanted to point out a recent Realtor.com report on the housing shortage. Sacramento was found to be the top major metro in the entire US when it comes to decreased inventory of homes for sale. So the housing shortage is real, and we're being recognized nationally, not in a good way. The study cited what we all know that many Bay Area residents have been moving east in search of more reasonably, reasonably priced homes, and that's certainly part of it. But the real problem is, the real problem for the inventory shortage is due to a lack of construction. If I could, if you don't mind me reading a small portion of that study, it says, "Now, there are plenty of cities seeing influxes of new residents, but the lack of building in the Sacramento region is what's earned the city the top spot on our analysis. New construction made up 9.5% of all the homes listed on Realtor.com, but that figure was just 1.9% in Sacramento." Let me say that last part again. "New construction made up 9.5% of all the homes listed on Realtor.com, but that figure was just 1.9% in Sacramento." So this limited new construction, this shortage is certainly not due to lack of desire from Homes by Town and other area builders. We want- We want to build more and be part of the solution. "But the overwhelming fee burden makes most projects, especially those for the middle class, nearly impossible to pencil out and construct. Any new fee or build requirement, especially build requirement, will only make it that much more difficult. Economy and dollars go where they're welcomed. Placer County has been a leading example in this region in a lot of ways, and we hope it'll continue to be so." So please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a comment in that regard.
Yes.
Yesterday, I had my annual physical, and my doctor, who could have been my grandson, I asked him about housing, because we were having this issue today, and he's, this young man, he's a doctor. He's been in escrow four times. The last time he was in escrow, they were all ready to go, someone came in with cash and upped the price, and he still doesn't have a home. And so this is evidence of the housing shortage that we have.
Yes.
So I just wanted to, you know, kind of put an emphasis on what you had to say.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Baumann, it's good to see you.
Thank you. Morning, Baumann, resident of Placer County, 1560 Taylor Road, and I'm, I just want to support your efforts to really look at this issue and, and look really at the idea that we need to build housing, affordable housing, any kind of housing for our Placer residents. I guess I, I just want to say that the, you know, the, the housing's going to help all of our residents. We need more diversity in Placer County. We are proud of our community. I, I get a little concerned about too much low, lower-income housing, affordable housing in, in areas where I, I think we've just always done better in scattered-site kind of opportunities so that we don't have, you know, we don't have the pockets of poverty that actually we have now, but that we actually mix it up a little bit, and I think that raises, raises the standard for everybody. So I would just encourage us to, you know, require more housing, more than fees. If, if that means, though, negotiating one at a time, I'm a little confused about how that actually works. I don't think we, I don't want to go back to the way it was. I think we need to have some requirements. I think building housing is the best way to make that happen, and I, I really support moving that in all of our communities so that there is, you know, just, that people can just fit in and we can be a community. As you know, I was here for a long time, and the issue is close to my heart because we've really struggled with trying to get housing, and so I'm just really cheering you as you go forward to really see if we can make this happen. I would, I would just say, I live close to the Bigford Ranch project, and if there's any way we can have that sort of very disappointing project, in my personal opinion, because I was hoping we had, you know, would have had a different, a different project in the end, again, like what we're talking about, if there's any way that we can go back and renegotiate, it's such a huge project, it sure seems like they would have some capacity to, to do something for the better of our whole community. I would just offer that for your consideration. So again, thanks for your great work, and, and really, whatever we can do to require the housing, I think is, is what will be best for all of us.
Thank you, Maureen. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Honorable Chair, Member of the Board, Phil Rodriguez with the Lewis Group of Companies, Lewis Apartment Communities, Lewis Plan Communities. We build a lot. We've built a lot in California and Nevada. We primarily build and design master plan communities, but we still do build apartments, which today are a challenge because of the cost of construction and the revenue that we expect to receive with the rents. I also represent the BIA as the Vice Chair, so we're very key into these discussions with Placer County and other jurisdictions throughout the Sacramento region on how to eliminate this affordability gap with housing. Steve and Shawna has done, done a great job with meeting with us and collaborating with us and extending the outreach, the Olive Branch, to talk about this discussion, and what I'm seeing here in the chambers is that's what's going on. There's a discussion that's being had about this challenging issue. A stakeholder process, I think, is key, and it's important. There was a slide up here, one, one piece of the slide that gave the assertion that new home construction is causing an affordability issue. I, I have to disagree with that. New home construction is not causing the issue, it's the requirements within new home construction that are oftentimes levied by the federal and state governments with respect to these great ideas, these priorities, that we need to include extra costs into building homes. These are the challenges that we face with trying to embed that into what is really the sticker price of a home. That's all of these things that are required, and all that we ask is from jurisdictions and the state government and the federal government, let's determine the priorities. We, as an industry, a home-building industry, we want to provide shelter for all. We're not dismissing any group. We want the bandwidth to include everybody, but what's, what's missing here is the discussion about the importance, the priorities. Is it more open spaces, is it more parks, is it dealing with climate change and air quality and wetlands and species? All those add into the cost of a home, period, and that's our challenge. We, we want to work with the county, we want to work with every jurisdiction that we're involved with. We're partners. We want to reach a solution, but, you know, I think that, I'll leave you with this, you know, a stakeholder process that includes everyone, and what I mean is commercial, retail, we don't, we don't pay the low wages that cause people to not be able to afford a home. So I think a stakeholder process moving forward is key and important, and however long that takes, but a good discussion needs to be had. We're willing participants to help cure this issue, but we need everyone to be involved.
Thanks, Phil. Good morning, Herb. Somehow I thought you would be here today.
Well, I'm glad to be here. Good morning, I'm Herb Whitaker with Legal Services of Northern California, and I'm also a resident of the unincorporated section of Placer County. I would like to speak in favor of the staff recommendation that there be the adoption of a policy and that the policy be that the housing be built rather than in-lu fees paid. I would like to begin by saying that I also was a member of the stakeholder group, working with Mr. Laduka and Terry Davis and many others for hundreds of hours to try to come up with a solution to this situation back in, I think it was 2004, 2007. We worked for many, many years, and we never came to a final resolution of that process. What we did was come out with an initial recommendation, which was that the county should review a number of options and should look at every single option which would be necessary to support more housing and affordable housing, including inclusionary zoning and including an in-lu fee policy, but we never really came to a recommendation about the specific details there. What we're talking about here is that the county has already adopted a policy saying that ten percent of the housing in the, in certain specific plan areas or in areas where there's a general plan amendment must be affordable. Now the question is, how do we get to that, that accomplishment? And so far, we have not done it, and we don't have the specific policies to do it, and that's what the staff is recommending. Mr. Laduka said that Roseville does not have a hard ten percent affordable housing rule, and I think that that's probably true. They don't have an exact requirement, but they do have a goal, and they've had staff, and they have a number of policies to push toward that goal so that they've been able to accomplish a substantial amount of affordable housing, approximately three thousand units in the last couple of decades. We've, I want to address just a few specific things, such as the graph that we see on the, the PowerPoint there, and I think it's important to note that the city of Davis has also accomplished a substantial amount of affordable housing, and I know because the Legal Services Corporation was involved in working with developers and working with the city over a number of years. Now, maybe they haven't done it in recent years because they're built out, but they have accomplished a substantial amount of affordable housing. When you look at the other jurisdictions, as Supervisor Euler has indicated, it's hard to compare the apples to unicorns, and I agree with that. So let's dig into this a little bit deeper, and one of the things we need to dig into is, if you look at the, at the city of Elk Grove and the city of Sacramento with those in-lu fee proposals, programs, how do those programs actually work and how much affordable housing has actually been built? And then if you look at the proposal for Placer County, what that proposal is, is a mitigation fee. The NEXA study, if I could have just a couple of more minutes.
Sure.
The NEXA study arrived at that fee as being a mitigation to offset the impacts that result from the development of housing, not as the fee that's necessary for us to be able to generate affordable housing. In my view, that fee should be much higher. Just a couple of more points. Supervisor Euler also compared housing to, to food, and I think that that's an interesting comparison. One of the things we need to keep in mind when we're talking about housing is that we're talking about areas in which the county has allowed a rezone and an amendment to our general plan, which generally provides a huge windfall benefit to the landowners and the developers with increased zoning density. And it's because of that increased benefit that the county has then justified in saying that there should be a, a contribution toward affordable housing, because if we don't do it that way, then all of the housing will go to above moderate income housing, we'll have the same crisis that we have today. We've heard a number of figures about housing and housing development, and I'd like to just indicate, I'd like to just report from the county's own annual housing element report that as of this last cycle, cycle of our housing element, Placer County has done exceptionally well in producing above moderate income housing. The goal for our last housing element was seventeen hundred seventy-three units of above moderate income housing. As of the, end of the fifth year of the eight-year cycle, we had accomplished eighty-eight percent of the goal at fourteen hundred seventy-two units of above moderate income housing. That means for households with income of above one-hundred-and-twenty percent of the median income in Placer County. So in other words, we're building the housing for above moderate income. We're selling the housing. Now, we could sell more possibly, as long as more people are coming in from the Bay Area and they're, and they're outbidding our local doctors. However, if you compare this to the number of low-income and very low-income units, the goal in our housing element was twenty-three hundred twenty-two units, twenty-three hundred twenty-two units, and what have we accomplished? One hundred and twenty-one units. It's an abysmal failure to produce the affordable housing. Most of that came from the Quartz Ridge Project, so there's been very little affordable housing for very low and low-income units. Let me conclude by saying that what our stakeholders group agreed on many years ago was some of the things that Supervisor Euler was saying, which is that we need to look at every aspect of the development, including the time to get a unit to market, other fees, ways in which the county could waive fees to, to offset affordable housing fees or in-lu fees or waive those completely, as long as the developer is willing to construct the housing. So once again, I ask the board to support the staff's recommendation that the housing be built.
Thank you, Herb.
Good morning, Chair, Honorable Board, and Todd Barbara Visana, Executive Director of Kids First, the Child Abuse Prevention Council of Placer County. And I just have a couple of points to make. I'm not going to belabor the housing shortage because we know that's a reality. We know it's a struggle to find housing in Placer County for all socioeconomic backgrounds. I'm going to talk about a couple of issues, number one, that Supervisor Euler brought on the comparison that we see before us. In many of the studies done in Placer County, we look at our regional partners, which are very similar in makeup and geography, and their density of cities, which is more like maybe Nevada County, El Dorado, Napa, some of the other counties that are more mixed. And so I, I guess that's one of my questions, if we are looking at those comparisons, if we're not just looking at our solution, but compare, pairing like counties and geographies and socioeconomic backgrounds, you know, it'd be interesting to see what some of those other counties have in regard to this or what their solutions are. Number one, the, the second thing is that I depend on all of you for the past, you know, thirty years that I've been associated with Placer County and making thoughtful and mindful decisions. I've more than once said to not only this group, but many agencies throughout the state, how collaborative Placer County is and how mindful and conservative we are, but also that we look for solutions that cover all and are as fair as we can be possible. And I'm here to speak about our clients, not only our clients that we serve that are at or below the poverty level, but also our employees, and to bring another facet of this regional problem, because it's not just about housing, it's about people coming to work, as Janice said, or being able to work here, but all the impact on our transit. We have transit issues, we have taxes that didn't get passed, taxes that we now hope to be passed in November that will help our regional transit development, and the impact that they have for most of my employees that Kids First cannot afford to live in Placer County. So they're living in Sacramento and other places and commuting to work to provide services to our communities, and they do it, and it's an excellent job, and thank you for so much for what you do. So it's not just the housing and finding housing for our clients and our employees, but also the impact that that has on our regional transit. And I just want to thank you again for your partnership with the community-based organizations. I know that housing and trying to find housing for those more disadvantaged is a priority. I partner with communities, block grant monies, with other nonprofits to keep people in their homes and help them to find homes. So I know that you care, I know that it's important, and it's a priority, so thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Good morning, Supervisor Holmes and members of the board. My name is Joanne Auerbach. I am a retired, longtime resident of Placer County, and I do a small amount of volunteer work for the Placer Community Foundation, Gathering in, and Foothills Habitat for Humanity. But I speak today as a private citizen, these are just my opinions. I want to thank you and your staff for your focus on this issue, your stick-to-do-ness, and for the work plan. Placer County has already done a lot for affordable housing, but the resources have changed, and the need is still great. It is possible in Placer County to find shelters, to find transitional housing, to find affordable rentals, but it's far short of the need. The gap, I think, is greatest in affordable home ownership for families with low and moderate incomes. So they seek homes farther away, thus increasing the commutes. One public comment from your last meeting on this subject, I think, provides a great vision statement, and that is affordable housing on a regular basis. Now, vacant land inventory is important, but what about the infrastructure? Who owns the land, and will they build affordable housing? You can modify regulations, provide incentives, that's all very important, but when the available land for residential use is used exclusively for above-market-rate, more expensive homes, there's no place left to build the affordable housing. Some of that finite land resource needs to be mandated for affordable housing, and that's why residential builders have to play a role, just like Placer County is playing a role, just like the cities are playing a role. Now, when a residential builder of a larger subdivision is required to build an amount of, a small amount of affordable housing, they do have some economies of scale, they have the option of using density bonus, building smaller houses, duplexes, requesting fee waivers of those fees the county controls, as well as partnering with nonprofits. Now, the builder doesn't give the houses away. When they sell that affordable unit to a family, they receive the proceeds from the loan that family qualifies for, their down payment. Does it fully cover the cost? Probably not, but it is some return. For example, a developer of fifty units in a subdivision builds five affordable units. That is more units than the in-lu fee will provide, and today's staff report recognizes the difficulties that, that a city or a county has in buying land and building infrastructure. It costs you more to do that than it does a private entity. I, I do think that there needs to come some certainty about what the fee should be in those very limited circumstances, and that it's good to proceed with the maximum fee, but even your maximum but even your maximum fee is not enough. It's not a mitigation fee, it's an in lieu fee. I think you can require more. And as you proceed, I hope you can maintain this focus and work on, again, getting affordable housing built on a regular basis. Thank you.
Good morning, Sue.
Good morning. I'm Sue Thompson, and I would just like to say, first of all, that I love builders. I do. They keep me employed. They're the manifestors of our shelter, our homes, our entire communities. And they wouldn't be here if they weren't for free. And I think that's what we kind of heard a little bit of. But I think there's other ways to do it. You know, we are definitely, we all agree, we have a housing crisis. And it's a simple law of supply and demand. Low supply, higher cost. And the cure for a housing shortage is more housing. I advocate in lieu of building, or I advocate building in lieu of fees. And I strongly support the community approach to creating a solution to keep up with whatever the demand is, and to do it in an affordable way without burdening just one player in the game. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
You guys need to get up and stretch?
This is nothing.
Oh, this is nothing? Okay, good, good, good. Okay, okay. I'll try and...
Sorry, kiss of death.
Good morning, Supervisor Holmes and other supervisors, staff. My name's Ken Larson, thirty-four-year resident of Placer County, unincorporated area and board member at Placer Community Foundation. Looking back, since 2013, the Board of Supervisors in the housing element adoption has said that affordable housing is a priority for the county. The results date, as we've heard from others, are lacking. We're just not getting there. The grand jury report of 2017 and 18 reaffirmed that for all. The housing work plan that was just completed, I think, does a really good job of helping to set the basis for how to move ahead, giving us strong data, solid data, to understand where we're at and how we might be able to move ahead in a number of different ways. But we need to, we need to move ahead. The fee-in lieu may be a piece of that. I personally don't think you could raise it high enough to really make a difference. And I don't think you should raise it high enough to really make a difference. There's got to be some other approaches. I would suggest that it's important to look at rationalizing the process for getting to market more quickly, to reducing the fees, et cetera. There's a lot that can be looked at. Who knows what it'll produce, but we've got to look at it. I would also suggest sticking to the ten percent build. That's been in there since 2013, and it's not been held to. And then with the fee-in lieu funds that are available, make it a focused effort to use that money as seed money to go out and try and draw other money. Go to big foundations, not ours, but bigger ones in the world that have a lot more money than us, who are interested in these areas, and use this money as seed money to pull more money in and get more houses built. We'll be back as long as this is on the docket. I'm really proud to be part of the civic discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Good morning. My name is Catherine Ferry. I'm with NorCal Mental Health America. I want to say that I really like the enthusiasm for stakeholder involvement that we're hearing this morning from so many of the parties here. And I definitely say yes to including both the developers and the community to getting all of the opinions in the room and discussing that and having everybody hear all of the opinions that are out there. And someone mentioned public meetings. I know that it can be difficult to get everybody involved, to get everybody to come to a meeting like this, but I think meetings should be public in the sense of publicizing that they're happening far and wide and reaching out to different areas of the community, people from different backgrounds, to actually get to those meetings, have them easily accessible so that people can drop in and not be so formal during the workday as meetings sometimes are. My perspective that I bring into this is one of stigmatized issues that people hate talking about, mental illness and homelessness. We've heard a little bit from my community partners here about some of the backgrounds that people bring into this situation. I can bring a personal one, which is I'm a person living in recovery from serious mental illness. And I now am a full-time, paid advocate in this county for those issues. Housing for me has always been a given, so I won't tell my story up here, except to say that without housing, my illness would have so devastated my life that I would never be standing up here doing this kind of work. I urge you to require that the stakeholder meetings that we talk about here are, that you require that people who've experienced homelessness are at those meetings. We've had A.J. Rodriguez up here a couple of times talking about his experience with homelessness and mental illness, and I think he, and there are many others like him, can bring that perspective and speak very articulately and with practical solutions from both work, as A.J. now does, and from actually that experience of living with homelessness. I also, another perspective that I think is important when talking about mental illness is family members who have a mentally ill loved one living in their home, and I'm sure that didn't make it into these statistics, but there are family members who have a mentally ill loved one living in their home, which can be straining emotionally and financially, and their fear is that, well, if I don't do this, my loved one will be out on the streets. And certainly, those kind of things happen to... So to have those stakeholders saying, hey, you know, we really need to have a place at this table, I think is really important. So just in closing, I think that to have those perspectives of individuals and families who've been hit by mental illness and homelessness that really need to be at that table, there's a lot of us here who can advocate on their behalf, almost done, who can advocate on their behalf, but if you don't have anyone in those meetings who can speak to the experience of, I've been there, I have, you know, not known where I would sleep that night, we meet a person or people preferably who can say things like that in a meeting and talk about the practical solutions that are necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Morning, sir.
Here again. Good morning. Larry Welch here, representing Placer Community Foundation, along with several of my colleagues, as you know. First, I'd like to thank you, as you've been thanked before, for sticking to it and staying with your focus on this issue and your commitment to solving the affordable housing crisis in our county. I'd also like to thank the staff, Sean and Steve, and everyone else, for the great work that they've been doing to address our housing crisis. We've come a long way in the last two years. This conversation didn't even exist before, two years ago. Well, it did, but not at this level of intensity, for sure. And if it weren't for the hard work and the determination of staff, we wouldn't be here together talking about the things that we're doing. We thank them for engaging the community, for updating the housing development and the housing work plans, and for bringing forward today's specific recommendations regarding workforce affordable housing fees. I agree with much of what has been said today. All of us, I think, agree that more housing is good for our community. And we also agree that what we've been doing to create affordable housing hasn't created affordable housing. We have created a little bit of a slush fund, or a, that's a bad word, that's a bad, bad word, a housing...
Trust fund.
Trust fund of a million dollars, but we haven't really constructed any housing or affordable housing. So we believe the simplest way to get affordable housing done, as I said last month, is to have the experts do it, have the builders and developers build units, not pay fees. That's the simplest way to get housing done. With this in mind, Community Foundation, my colleagues and I, ask the Board of Supervisors to approve and support the staff recommendations regarding the affordable housing fees as soon as possible. Specifically, we ask, and I mentioned a few of these last month, we ask the Board to take following decisions: that fee-in lieu payments only be used as a last resort, that we always look to construct affordable units as our number-one priority; two, that fee-in lieu is the, if fee-in lieu is the only alternative for a specific small-scale project, that we implement the recommendations the staff has presented today, of five dollars and ninety-five cents a square foot, discounted by three percent of the admin fee that's already been eliminated; three, that the existing fee-in lieu trust fund dollars be used to construct affordable units as quickly as we possibly can; four, and this was not mentioned last month by me, but I would like to echo and support the comments, and that we, a recommendation by Supervisor Montgomery, that we assign a dedicated county resource to focus on getting affordable housing created, built in our county. I don't understand all the details of how that would happen, but I think all of the things that were mentioned by the building industry in terms of getting people together, working on these things in a common way, is going to need a leader, it's going to need somebody dedicated to this, and in an ongoing way, it's going to have to be dedicated to building housing, if I may continue.
Sure.
Yeah. And then last, we ask that once, that you continue to review the affordable housing situation at the Board of Supervisors on a regular basis. I don't know if it's a couple of times a year, whatever makes sense for you guys, but to review what's actually happening, what the work in process is, what the construction pipeline looks like, what pending approvals in projects might look like, but to keep it visible and to keep the conversation going, so everybody kind of has an idea of what's happening in our community. In closing, I thank you again for focusing on this, on the affordable housing issue. And I encourage you to keep up the good work by approving the staff's recommendations as quickly as possible. We've done a ton of good work over the past two years. I think we understand the problem, we understand many of the alternatives, and I think implementing the staff's recommendations will take a step in the right direction for us solving this problem. In terms of the idea of working together and putting together a task force or a group of people to, from all constituencies to work on this, I think it's a great idea. I was on the original Placer Legacy Citizens Advisory Committee in 1994. It's 2018. Waiting to implement for the completion of a task group or a work group is not what we need to do. We need, we need to take decisions and create that group, come back when that group has the recommendations, and then apply whatever recommendations are appropriate at that time. We should not kick the can. We should consider these and make decisions on these recommendations and put the work group together and work forward from there. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Welch.
Good morning, Commissioner Holmes and former supervisors, Supervisor Holmes, excuse me. Commissioner Holmes, the first five commission, I'm the chairperson, but I'm actually here as a board member of the Community Foundation. My name's Rick Siletta. I live on Ridge Road, been there for approximately forty years. Beautiful bike lane road, lots of bikes on Ridge Road. I'm sure the folks earlier this morning recognize how powerful that drive is from Lincoln to Ridge Road. But I'm here really to speak, as the other board members of the foundation, has addressed the pleasure and appreciation of the staff's work on presenting these recommendations to you today. I speak here in favor of adopting those resolutions. But I want to say a few things about the policy before you. It's your policy to make. There has been significant discussion, negotiations, and collaboration for not just two years, many years. And it's time for the policy to be made. We have some outstanding recommendations before you. We hope you adopt those. Once the policy, which is yours to make, is made, then I think there's room for some of the negotiations that have been presented by the builders, the developers, and citizens of the county. But until that policy's made, we are going to be in this position of further discussion. And I come from a long background promoting collaboration, but enough has happened, it's time for the policy to be made. It's important not to let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And the conversations today have a lot of, let's get it right perfectly. What's before us from the staff's recommendation is not perfect, but it is good, and we can build on that good. If we wait to negotiate, to facilitate, to collaborate to the perfect, we won't get there. And you've heard a lot of comments about that today. I also wanted to say a bit about the idea of a fee. If the county gets in the business of continuing to collect fees in lieu, you're going to build a bureaucracy in this county that you don't want. The county has its priorities: public safety, health and human services, land, economic, transportation development. Taking on the responsibility of housing, that's not something the county should be in the business of managing developers, managing housing stock. You have these other priorities that you're equipped, funded, and skilled at. Taking on the idea of collecting fees, massive amount of fees in lieu of development, we should build, build, and build. Don't create another bureaucracy with all the ordinances, regulations, and requirements that after you collect a fee, you've got to manage. We're going to be in the same place we are right now with the fee in lieu of, very little gets built. Again, the foundation recommends that you adopt and approve the staff's recommendations. Thank you. Good day.
Thanks, Rick.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Reverend Jerry Paulson. I'm a pastor of New Faith United Church of Christ, and I'm here as a representative of the clergy voice of Placer People of Faith Together. We sent electronically a letter to the board, to Terry Evaldi, and hopefully you've had time to review that, but I would like to read it also into the record. As members of the clergy voice of Placer People of Faith Together, we've attended Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors meetings regarding the Placer County Housing Strategy and Development Plan, 2013 to 2021. We find the plan is well-thought-out and proposes worthy achievable goals. We observe, however, that five years into its implementation, there are still vital components that have yet to be addressed. For instance, the fee-in lieu of building ten percent affordable housing in Placer County. This item was heard on September 13th, Planning Commission, and slated for action on September 25th at the Board of Supervisors. It's been delayed yet again until today, even though the plan called for a decision in September of this year. This is not simply a delay of a week or two. This item has been before these bodies since January of this year in the housing plan since 2013. What causes this lengthy delay? Are there special interests working behind the scenes to keep kicking this can down the road? The reality is this: Placer County has a growing housing shortage, especially in the area of affordable housing. We're in dire need of the right mix now and for the future of all types of housing. Developers, however, continue to concentrate on high-end units that bring them the most profit, paying an average fee of $4,000 instead of building badly-needed affordable apartments, homes, and condos. Affordable housing is achievable. We need look no further than our neighbor in South Placer, the city of Roseville, which has done a commendable job of building three thousand, approximately, affordable housing units by holding developers accountable to the commitment of build, to build instead of paying the small fee. The million dollars paid into the fund that has been collected over the past twenty years sits there, except for help with emergency or transitional housing. These are good efforts, but not a solution to permanent housing. We stand ready to help our county achieve the goal of housing for every resident, but patience is strained. Just as we have been responsible to the needs of our people and our faith communities, you also need to be accountable, your citizens, as our elected representatives. "Justice delayed is justice denied," said Martin Luther King. Clarissa Pinkler Estes states, "When they say it's not the right, it's not the right day, the right month, or the right year, we agree. The right month was last month, the right day was yesterday, and you're running behind schedule. What in the name of all that is holy are you going to do about it? We look forward to this meeting and the future meetings with the hope that this issue will be moved to a long-awaited resolution." Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for your...
Thank you for your diligence and your time this morning. My name is Ingrid Pearson. I come to address one issue, or actually just make a suggestion, and that has to do with developing your group for further implementation. My suggestion is that you bring in a lender, or two lenders, mortgage company owners, maybe. My background has been twenty-five years of mortgage lending, running and supervising loans to new home builders, each with their component of affordable housing. I can't tell you how frustrating it has been over the years to see the bar here for affordable housing, the prices here, and the loan programs not matching. So when you bring in your people, bring in a lender as well. For the last five years, I retired from my lending. I had worked closely with BIA and a large scope of their builders on, like I say, the new home lending. After I retired, I became a Realtor local here, lived in the Auburn area since 1955, and have been out over in the Mount Vernon area in our home for over forty years. So I really appreciate being able to work in this community. I love seeing new homes, would like to see more new homes, but also have them be available affordably to our citizens here in the community. It's very, very hard to help a first-time home buyer or a re-entry buyer buy in the general Auburn area and buy a home that doesn't have to be totally rehabbed. So I thank you for your time and just ask that you include a lender in your discussion group. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson.
Hello there.
Hello, Chair and Honorable Board of Supervisors. All, I'm Carol Carter. I'm a retired United Methodist clergy person, living in Auburn for six years now. I just want to underscore the request for action. I would say talk can go on a very long time and nothing will happen, but I do like the idea of pulling together stakeholders, including those who have very little power to speak in this place. Pulling together that to carry out the new policy that I hope you will adopt, that has been recommended to you by a very hard-working team of the county. So I'm encouraging you to take action, accept their recommendation, and then move ahead very strongly to bring people together to carry it out. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, and Mr. Holmes, and good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Antoinette Fabella. I'm a resident of the city of Auburn, Placer County, and I'm a advocate, a community advocate. So I just want to share a story. I remember the days of when I was a social worker for Placer County, and I had to assist my clients to find housing. It was so easy. I could pick up the phone, call prayers, take my client to Bell Gardens, go down to Lincoln on First Street, go to Roseville and Harding. I knew the places where to go to take my clients. Well, those days are gone. The housing list of affordable apartments is now obsolete because, to be honest, there's a two- to three-year waiting list. So we all know there's a need for housing. I really appreciate all that's been said here today, and I agree that there should be no in lieu fees, and, you know, I thought we had these housing meetings since 2015, and here we are today, again, talking about more meetings. So hopefully, everybody that needs to be invited to attend these meetings will attend. You know, I spoke with the CEO of the, what is it, the Ridge Courts Project, and he informed me that it took them, what, twenty years to build that because of all the requirements of planning? So I also want to suggest that planning be involved with this, because I think that if the planning department and the requirements for planning are still overwhelming, you can also include no fees, but then if they still have all these rigorous requirements from the planning department, it's going to still make it difficult. So why not bring everybody in together, and the county has the opportunity to adjust the requirements of the planning department as well? So I just think the, having, and also, I believe that the commissioner for the older adults advisory commission needs to be brought in because of the housing problems for our seniors, as well as these agencies that have come before you today for children and families. But I think we need to bring everybody to the table. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Cole Duipnik. I'm born and raised here, and when I think about housing in our community, I, you know, what are we all here for? Happiness, a home. Owning a home brings you pride, which brings pride to the community. Having apartments is great, having a condos is even better, something to own, something to build. My family's been here for years. The planning just to get a house built takes time, and what does the old man say? Time is money. So too much money wasted in time, and along with that, you need to, the fees, the people, the kids I grew up with that are now men, that are your contractors, that are your welders, that are your workers, they've moved on. There's too much time and not enough capital because of all the fees to build their own homes and start their businesses, which is important because we need these people. Now your cost of building a house, which was $150 a square foot, you can barely get someone to build it for $250 a square foot. That's a lot of money. Then you talk about adding an additional $6 a square foot. Who wants to build like that? We need, we need the homes, but we need less fees so that other people can start, the young can start building homes and doing it, which will bring the cost down because there'll be more inventory, so you'll sell your house for less, your new homes. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Duipnik. I see no one at the lectured in Tahoe, and so I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period, and we'll bring it back to the board to see what direction. Supervisor Wigan.
First, I guess, I want to thank staff for all of the work that's gone on to this, into this overall, all this time, even though both of you are relatively new compared to this question in the county, but particularly want to thank you for biting the bullet, bringing forward a recommendation that does, I think, help us, I have no idea what we're going to do, and we're obviously going to defer that, but it gives us some framing that I think is reflective, excuse me, of existing board policy and the comments you've heard over the last year or so. Marcus got up and left, but I just wanted to point out that Steve is still here. I'll be eighty-one in forty years, so, or fourteen years, excuse me, fourteen years.
I was going to say, forty-eight.
It was optimistic comment on my part. So at the point there, simply that the Citizens Advisory Committee actually existed for just two years, and then we made policy after that, so if we were starting from scratch in affordable housing policy, and we had that kind of a timeframe, I think having that kind of standing committee would be effective, and I'm not adverse to doing something like that now as an ongoing basis, but I think we're really talking more about nuanced changes as compared to starting a policy development with nothing in existence at this point in time. And so in that we are going to defer our comments, I just have one question, and that is, the chart that is still up behind us on the screen shows Davis with this $18,750 fee. Is it, am I accurate in thinking in terms of methodology that Roseville's fee actually would be, if they were in fact going to allow for a fee, it would be significantly more than that? It would be the ten percent requirement applied to the cost of putting in place an affordable unit, and unless an affordable unit can be put in place for $75,000, which I doubt, it would have to be more than that. Is that correct?
So Roseville's not using the gap, they're using the full cost of construction.
Right.
So it's just a different methodology. So the fees that are before you are really more looking at that gap analysis. So it's definitely the difference between what the market rate is and what the cost is for the affordable and the in-between. I couldn't speak to Roseville's, we would have to look at its lands costs and all of that information, but their, the fee that they have shared with us was the full cost of construction in 2016. They stated that to be 115, yeah.
Yep. So I guess with that, last request I have is, I, Marcus, please, some comments about, so I think what I'm hearing is that Roseville has a policy in place, which is to provide for the affordable housing, but they're completely urban, unlike the county, we're a different animal. But I'm really interested in some of the flexibility that they have implemented over the last few years that was referred to particularly by Marcus, and in fact, that's where the question about this cost issue came from, in my mind. So if you could do a little bit more research on that, because I think we, at the end of the day, want to have the same thing, we want to have a firm goal, and through the review process, I know staff is going to be applying a myriad of different standards and board policies, and I'd like to see what kind of creativity could be done in a negotiation basis, but based on some explicit board policy desired outcomes.
Supervisor Geller.
So I think as we talk about the use of a fee and transitioning away from it to requirements, I think it's important to remember counties historically, Placer County in particular, have not historically been in the business of urbanized development. The vast majority of the development that happens in the unincorporated area, unincorporated area, is a result of parcel maps, actually, not even large-scale subdivisions that come before us where we hang all kinds of conditions on them. It's, somebody has ten acres and they split it into four parcels, and that's how the vast majority of our landscape was developed. And when you have that kind of development that's driving your housing inventory, you don't have an opportunity to drive affordable housing. So a fee was created in the unincorporated area originally to try to figure out, how do we get at this issue of us, driven predominantly by parcel map development in large lot areas, rural residential, rural agricultural areas? How do we start to get some mechanism in place to address this? And really, it wasn't until we started talking about more traditional urbanized development in West Placer that we came up with, okay, now we really have to get serious about this whole affordable housing issue because we're now in the urbanized development business, or getting into it anyway. So the, where I think the fee falls flat is when we try to collect a fee and use perhaps the one tool that has, over the years, borne out as the least effective mechanism for delivering any kind of inventory into the marketplace, the government as the provider of that service. So you collect the fee, and then you turn back to the government, which has demonstrated time and again that we don't deliver product to the marketplace efficiently, do not just our own issues, but all kinds of issues that get layered on us, you know, layer upon layer with wage requirements and all kinds of other things that we have to adhere to. So what I am hopeful is that through these conversations, working with the Building Industry Association, working with our city partners and all the rest, that we look toward market mechanisms, kind of like we did going back to the conservation plan, where with the conservation plan, we say, all right, you're going to be disturbing this many acres of this type of habitat, you have to go into the private marketplace and show us how you're going to mitigate for that, and go find a farmer who's willing to sell a conservation easement, or go find somebody who's holding a piece of ground, who's willing to sell you the ground that has wet ones on it. But we look at that builder and say, go mitigate. We don't say, write us a check, we don't say meet this particular, but you, go take care of it. And so I'm hopeful that whether it's working with our own ability to set land use policy and zoning in the unincorporated area, working with our partners that are historically the ones we've looked to for more urbanized development, the cities, that we can come up with, kind of like what we've ventured into in Tahoe with a banking system for our TA, our Temporary Accommodation Units in Tahoe, we might play a role in establishing a banking-type system that is private sector-oriented, private sector-driven, where a private sector individual can go take down forty acres in an urbanized area, produce a bunch of units that the county can direct a developer to say, okay, you might be able to meet your obligation there, in those kinds of projects that are just not suitable for meeting unaffordable housing requirement in the unincorporated area by virtue of what their current land use designation is, or by virtue of, as we addressed earlier, infrastructure costs to deliver and all the rest. The other thing, of course, that we all have to bear in mind is that no matter what we change as we propose, using our land use authority to help provide more affordable units in the marketplace, there's going to be an equal number, if not more, of people in this chamber who are upset at us for making that land use change. And I hearken back to the park at Granite Bay, where we had a seventeen-acre project in Granite Bay that was zoned for roughly one home to the acre, that would have produced fifteen, sixteen nice million-dollar, 1.5 million-dollar mansions on a major corridor, approximate to commercial, walking to commercial, all the rest, and our board said, you know, there's probably a higher, better use for this piece of property. We ended up with fifty-three residential units on those sixteen, seventeen acres that now grading and underway. It will be delivering a much more affordable product to the marketplace. But that one project was what drove somebody to run against me for office two years ago, and we had a chamber full of people saying, don't you dare make this change in Granite Bay and provide more market rate type housing. So understand that every time our board does take a look at making these kinds of changes, and we've been asked by our own staff to make administrative changes to our zoning codes that'll be coming to our board that are hopefully going to make it easier, more affordable for people to get through, we're being threatened with lawsuit right now just over stuff like that, where we want to be able to make it easier for people to deliver stuff into the marketplace. So while I appreciate the group that does consistently show up here and encourage us to take these kinds of steps, understand that every step along the way, where we're moving toward trying to make it easier to put more product into the marketplace, there are other forces just as vocal who are coming at us on the other side as well. So thank you for continuing your role in this conversation. I look forward to trying to figure out what role we can play to encourage the private sector, whether it's through our land use, whether it's through our fee structure, what have you, to really work on what is that gap financing somebody alluded to, what is that delta that we can help solve using whatever mechanisms we have.
Thank you. Supervisor Ringo.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone who spoke today. I think it's really important that we heard a diverse set of opinions here, but I think all really focusing on the same outcome, which is how do we get additional affordable housing stock? And when we talk about affordable housing stock, we're really, we're kind of retraining ourselves to use the word achievable here in Placer County because we recognize... ourselves to use the word achievable here in Placer County, because we recognize that everything from very low to, I think it's a hundred and ninety-five percent of AMI in eastern Placer County presents challenges for our population in terms of rental or purchase. Listening to the comments, there were two quotes that just kept running through my mind. One is from Santayana, who said, "Those who do not remember the past are condemned to repeat it." The other is, I think, my mom and me with chores back when I was a teenager, which is the definition of insanity, is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different outcome. And I think we all can agree that the outcomes that we have achieved, while there have been some that we can point to, are really insufficient. You know, I can think of Quartz Ridge here on the west side, I can think of the Domus Project on the east side. Beyond that, there's not really a lot of successes that we can point to in Placer County. And my perspective is, the reason we really can't point to these successes is because we have continued to collect these inlo fees, we've put them, you know, in a pot, they have lost their value of money as we hang on to them, hoping that we can create enough dollars in this pot of money to do something. But getting back to this definition of insanity piece, the definition of insanity, as a board member, from my perspective, is asking our board to continue bashing our heads against the walls when we either get land donations or we get dollars in lieu, instead of saying, "Development community, you need to build this." My perspective is, when the development community is going through a SEQA process, that is the perfect time to include that ten percent component. And I will just say, the brain damage that we had to go through as a board around some of these projects where they became our responsibility as a county, in terms of public outreach, in terms of having to pay for it ourselves, and as Supervisor Yular points out, so much more costly when government is doing this stuff than the private market, it just seems nuts that we would continue saying, yes, let's accept land, or let's accept in-loo fees. So, when this comes back to our board for some kind of final direction, I'm going to be very strongly in the camp of, we need to say, you need to build it. So, really focusing on the Roseville model, and only in very, very narrowly tailored situations would I even consider an in-loo fee. I think something that has not been brought up in the context of this conversation is the general need for housing in Placer County. And I think, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, or maybe I got the information from Shauna, but my understanding is, between the county and the incorporated cities, there are about fifty thousand either approved or in process of approval units that are out there right now, which, when built, and again, the development community brought up the fact that they hadn't been built yet, that should take a significant amount of pressure off our existing housing stock, but that's a long time in the future. And so, we need to figure out how to get to this, the housing stock that we need for our low-income workers particularly. But those low-income workers are, you know, often they're teachers, they're not just the barista, they're not just the greeter at Target, they're firefighters, they're teachers, they're people who are integral parts of our communities. And we need to figure out a way to do that more quickly. And again, I'm skeptical that an in-loo fee is the appropriate way to do that. I look forward to having a conversation with all five of us on the board present.
Thank you. We have closed public comment, but I'll allow you to come forward if you keep it really brief.
I know how you like to hear about me. So, my primary question, have you changed Placer County to a non-sanctuary county?
No, we have not.
Okay, because I waited a few months to see if you made your decision. Well, Connor, with that, I'm going over to the Placer County now, and paying five thousand dollars in Placer County property tax. So, I'm just wondering, should I just give this to an illegal and bypass the county?
Uh, no, ma'am.
I mean, that would be simple, and that we can pay for the health fare, the legal fare.
You missed the early part of the meeting where we took public comment. This is public comment regarding the issue.
Okay, well, I just wanted to, I wanted to hear again, that none of you have made a decision to take us out of the sanctuary county.
No.
I think it's also important to note that of that five thousand dollar check that you're writing to Placer County, eighteen percent of it actually goes to the county, the balance goes to special districts, school districts, other districts.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
I look at that. But the other comment I'd like to make, and I think it was very interesting, a lot of people bought action, and this is just from an experience that I've had, we had a lot of problems down in the state parks with accidents and stuff, so decided, well, how could we make the public steward to the park? So, we got together with the Auburn State Park and Sacramento State Park, or Folsom State Park, and eighteen of the trail users, and we worked for nine months, and it took us thirty-six versions, and we worked with both county parks. One of the state park workers standing beside us, sitting beside us, said, "It would take in this state a hundred thousand dollars in ten years to do this." Well, one of the things we did, every time we walked out of the meeting, you have an action item, and you had to come back, that had been answered. So, just to, not that I'm trying to be a little braggy here, but we did have a good time, we produced a nice product. So, just in your meetings, make sure you have an action item, and then make it that it's going to be brought up the next time.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks for being, let me come back up.
Yeah. Also, we lost a board member. So, is there any desire on the boards, the board, to have a cross-section of stakeholders?
I would say yes, with the caveat that we actually put some time constraints around it. So, as much as I love the fact that Supervisor Yular and Supervisor Wygant have basically dedicated their entire lives to the PCCP, I don't think we want to replicate that process.
No.
So, I would, I would suggest that we, I think there's a lot of this information that already exists, and that the real issue is the sharing of interests and ideas. I would, I would suggest that we put probably a two-month, I'm going to say quick.
No more, yeah, no more than two.
No more than two-month timeframe around this meeting of bringing all these folks together. Supervisor Yular, your thoughts on that?
Well, what, what has the, obviously, the BIA here is the threat that we're going to hang a fee on the residential builders. So, I think, so long as the board is open to the notion that we're, we need to look at all land uses to be a part of this solution, and as indicated, what role government can play to reduce barriers to entry, then I think you drive people to the table when you put out there the notion that, yeah, maybe industrial land uses, maybe commercial land uses, we should be considering all land uses for this. I think that engages more people in the conversation by necessity. But I also think it is important for those folks that are a part of our charitable community base to also under, gain a better understanding through this conversation of what really are the barriers to delivering product to the marketplace that meet our affordable housing requirements. So, I would encourage their participation as well.
All right. Sounds like we got some sort of a plan, but I do want to make sure that it has time constraints, because I have a saying of my own, "When all is said and done, more is said than done," and I want to see something done.
Yeah, agreed, and I'm very sensitive to the expressed concerns around this having taken so long, but I also think that in the conversation today, there were a number of concerns teased out, some from, I'm going to characterize this as your side of the conversation, and some from the other side of the conversation, that I think we can get to some agreements on fairly quickly with the right folks at the table, and rather than give direction to go forward with something that ends up being unworkable, and I agree with, you know, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good, I think we're all striving toward the good here, rather than end up with something unworkable that we have to turn around in a couple of months and go, oh, wait, timeout, that didn't, that wasn't where we needed to be. I think it's valuable to take a little bit more time, and understanding frankly, that even if we were to direct the development community today to start building, there are very few projects coming forward that this would even be applicable to. And I think that's part of the value of this conversation that we're going to have. I think Shauna and others will be able to sort of say, here's actually who this would be applicable to, and in what circumstances. I think there's a perception that this would bring, you know, hundreds, if not thousands, of new affordable housing units to Placer County in a short timeframe, and I think we need to set our expectations around that.
All right. Does staff have some sort of direction at this point?
So, I'm very excited to get started on a stakeholder effort, and pulling them in together, and I appreciate having the time constraint on that, and we respect that. We are rolling into some holidays, and so, I think, for those that are interested, if they can get in touch with me, you know, we'll start to pull together that cross-section of a group, and then probably after the first of the year, be able to really sit down with them, and then outline a plan and bring that back to the boards, so that you know what we're working on, and, you know, what that realistic timeframe might be.
And I just want to be sure that the stakeholder group is not unwieldy. We don't want a big group of people, and again, when all is said and done, more is said than done.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all for your participation, it was a lively discussion. As chair, I'm going to declare a five-minute recess to attend to a matter of personal comfort. Okay, we're going to reconvene and move to department item four C. This is a presentation about photovoltaic systems at various county-owned sites, and Mr. Steve Newsome.
Good morning. Steve Newsome, Deputy Director of Capital Improvements. I'm here to give you a presentation for an opportunity to expand upon our efforts to reduce our energy costs in the county. We have had more than a decade of success at reducing our energy costs, primarily through projects that reduce energy consumption, but also implementation of photovoltaic systems, largest of which is a ground-mounted system just south of the juvenile detention facility at the DeWitt campus. That installation has been there for over ten years, and just this past year, we renegotiated that power purchase agreement, and currently, we're paying about fifty-six percent of what the utility would charge us for electricity. So, tremendous savings through that process, and so now, we have an opportunity to expand upon that in a pretty large way, and I have some slides here that I'll present to you, and then request the approval to move forward with a request for proposal. These are the typical installations that we'll see. We have the two on the right, we have roof-mounted systems that you may be familiar with, at the Fab building, there's a large roof-mounted system there. We have the ground-mounted system like, next to the juvenile detention facility. And most of what I'm going to show you here, that's proposed, would be a carport-type system, like the bottom-left image there. And you'll see, this is a night shot, and this is just an example, this is a night shot that shows a lot of the components that we will be requiring in the RFP. You see that there's a concrete base at the bottom of the columns, which protects the columns from vehicles parking. You'll also see that those columns are placed so that there's not a reduction in parking spaces. And then also, there is lighting that provides security lighting, code-required lighting, but also improves upon our dark sky, that we always want to seek opportunities to enhance. And the RFP that I put together would require a two-step-type lighting system, which would save additional energy, but also would illuminate more when someone, when motion is detected, someone going to their car, et cetera. Let's see here, there we go. These are the general locations, and some of the larger footprint buildings and larger energy-consuming buildings that I'm proposing that we include in this RFP. You'll see the red dotted perimeters, these are areas that we would allow photovoltaic systems to be placed in. And if you notice, trees really are struggling in a parking lot environment, and you'll see how tiny the trees are within the parking lots versus at the perimeter. So, a couple of reasons why I'm proposing putting it at the interior parts of the parking lot. One, emergency vehicles need to come and, you know, serve the building, so they need to have a clear, unobstructed path. Two, this would provide a tremendous amount of shaded parking, which everyone enjoys. And three, the carport-type panels would be interior more, so we'd still enjoy the more landscape perimeters of the parking lots where sidewalks and vehicles are traveling. These are the two locations shown here, at the Community Development Resource Center, and then at the Finance Administration Building. Then here, further south, adjacent to the Auburn Justice Center, and then just east of the Auburn Main Jail, these are locations that could be available. And this, the RFP is structured, I'll just add this, the RFP is structured so that we're really seeking that the private sector come with ideas. This could be a power purchase agreement proposal, could be a lease proposal, it could be something else. But we're going to leave a lot of that up to the proposers, because this is a very large system, so I think we're going to attract a lot of competition for this RFP. And so, we're going to seek out and certainly select that proposal that's most to our advantage. So, we wanted to only provide some limitations on potential locations, and we would consider other options, for instance, rooftops and so forth. This is One Thousand Sunset. You can see there's a great deal of parking lot area, but also, the roof on this building is a great backdrop for PV, the orientation of the building, and the basically unobstructed plane that's up there that could be utilized for panels is tremendous. And what we've calculated, just based on what's shown here, is that this building, and actually, the CDRC building, those buildings could potentially become a zero-net energy, or at least electricity, with the, based on the size of system that we're showing This is down at the Santucci Justice Center, there's a very large parking lot area that we would propose, that would serve the jail down there, which of course is a twenty-four-seven high-intensity energy-using facility. And then to the bottom left, you see the building B there, that would have rooftop area as well as the parking lot areas available, too. As I showed you earlier, the opportunity here would have some constraints that we would require, for instance, the low end of any installed carport system, we would want at least ten feet above the adjacent grade. This would allow for, you know, tall trucks and so forth to still park under there. The two-level LED lighting that I noted, the concrete bases that would protect the columns from cars hitting it, and then no loss of parking space. columns from cars hitting it, and then no loss of parking spaces as well. We will also require them to modify and restore areas that are landscaped. For instance, this could have been an island with a few trees on it, and the trees are removed, and now there's just low landscaping and irrigation installed there. This is another requirement that I've included, and that is the underside of the carport installations, she'll have no ability for birds to perch and nest under there, much like when you go to a gas station and you look up, you see the canopy there completely smooth, nothing for a bird to perch on. With that, I'm requesting that we get approval for the Director of Public Works and Facilities to issue the RFP, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Supervisor, you are.
Would you jump back to the slide that shows CEDR and the Fab building? There we go. So perhaps more the Fab than CEDR. The ground-mount arrays that you're looking at there, obviously you're going to be talking about some trenching through that. Have we budgeted in the cost? I don't know when the last time, if we've done an overlay on that particular parking lot in some time, but have we, are we anticipating that any cost of overlays post-trenching in order to get the electricity to a meter is going to be borne on the project, or is that our own cost?
No, that ultimately it will be what we're paying for the energy.
You want it in, okay.
Correct.
The cost of the overlay gets, okay.
Correct.
And then do you, is there any objection, if you're going to be removing center islands, particularly under those that would be under some kind of a canopy, and you're going to be doing an overlay, any objection to if somebody were to come in and say, "We want to restripe with a different orientation in order to maximize the, in order to maximize system output"?
I would have no objection to that. That, again, gets back to the whole idea of really bring us your best
Right.
Ideas. So all of these sites have very good opportunities for orientation. And if there is a, you know, a proposal that says, "Hey, we're going to change the orientation," and if it changes how the parking is laid out, we'd obviously have to review that. We don't want to lose any parking.
Right.
We already have that issue now.
I noticed particularly on, again, on the Fab building, the single-load parking closest to the building, adjacent to the sidewalk there, you don't have that in red. Are you basically saying, "Give us whatever proposal," because you can get a cantilever structure over that and provide cover for the walkway there?
Correct. We could, yes.
So you're fine with, basically you're saying these general areas?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
You're not saying it has to be within this footprint?
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
Are you saying somebody has to respond to all? The reason I ask the question is you showed the jail, and of course, the jail is served by Roseville Electric.
Correct.
The economics on Roseville Electric not nearly as good as Rockland and PG&E?
Correct. Right.
So are you looking at something that would have everything, but if you threw out the Roseville Electric stuff, it looks this much better? You guys make the decision, kind of a thing?
Yes.
Okay.
We want as much flexibility as possible so that they are trying to be as competitive as possible.
Sure. Sure. Okay.
You're correct. The Santucci location is the only Roseville Electric location. The rest are PG&E. And in anticipation of this, we worked with PG&E to meet a deadline of December 31st of 2017 to get grandfathered in. As more PV hits the market, it's impacting the utility companies, and so they're backing off on what they can, you know, give to us. So we were able to achieve some benefit there at no cost to us at that time. It was just an application that we had submitted.
Supervisor Montgomery.
Thank you. I'm delighted to see this come forward. Two questions. The first is, would these projects be something that potentially Pioneer Community Energy could respond to the RFP, since our board has discussed potentially generating our own renewable energy here in the county?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then the one question that I would have just about the sort of usability of these from the driver or the pedestrian standpoint is, what's the vision for runoff systems on this? What are we going to do, you know, at the bottom edge of those slopes to keep people from getting drenched with rain?
Right. Typically, there is not a gutter and downspout system installed on these. It's just a shed-type approach to rainwater. And we can look at that. I think that, and everything, of course, will result in ultimately what is the proposal going to cost. The, I think the challenge with that will be laterals going into a storm drain system. But I, and I'll research that a little further, because there's a number of installations that have been done that are large-scale in the area, and I can check that and check it during rainfall the next time.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about the, thinking about the orientation, the aspects of really kind of where those would be situated, particularly at the DeWitt Center, in thinking that, you know, we might have some unintended consequences of, you know, people.
Need to get into the trunk of your car.
Yeah.
And you're underneath the waterfall.
Yep.
Sure.
Thank you.
No, that's noted. Thank you.
All righty. Any other comments from board members? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address us on this item? She had some light on it or anything. All right, sorry.
Oh, I did want to actually say thank you as well for thinking about motion sensing, dark skies compliant lighting. I think, you know, oftentimes we think about these things as being covered so not creating lighting, light, but sometimes you can look at some gas stations and go, "Wow, where the heck did that lighting come from?", even though it's all covered by a canopy.
Right.
Thank you.
I think from a security standpoint, too, it helps as someone is leaving the building in the evening, and if they see that an area is lit more, they know that there's been motion in that area, so maybe their level of alert is heightened, so.
All righty, anyone in the audience? Seeing none, we'll bring you back to board protection. Moved and seconded to approve item Public Works and Facilities, item 4C, photovoltaic systems at various county-owned sites. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Now we'll move to item 4D. This is the sale of two vacant properties in the Saber City community of Roseville, California.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Chairman Lori Morris, property manager for the Department of Public Works and Facilities. I'm here today with Karen Boulay, project manager from Real Estate Services. Today, we are asking your board to declare two Saber City properties in the unincorporated area of Placer County as not required for public use pursuant to the California Government Code 25363. These properties are in the Saber City neighborhood, which is an approximately 250-lot mobile home subdivision created in the 1960s. It is southwest of the city of Roseville and just north of the Placer County and Sacramento County line. First, the Vandenberg property, a 3.78-acre vacant and undeveloped portion of the larger five-plus-or-minus-acre county-owned parcel located at 100 Vandenberg Circle, south of Billy Mitchell Boulevard and PFE Road, at the entrance of Saber City neighborhood. The second is Hap Arnold property, a .41-acre vacant and undeveloped flag lot located south of PFE Road and off of Hap Arnold Loop, at the northeastern boundary of Saber City. We are asking that your board authorize the Director of Public Works and Facilities or designee to issue a written notice to public entities and housing sponsors to sell these properties in accordance with Government Code 54222. If no written offers are received, then to conduct separate public auctions for the Vandenberg property at a minimum bid of $470,000 and the Hap Arnold property at a minimum bid of $42,750. This would be pursuant to Government Code 25363. The 3.78 Vandenberg property is part of the five-acre parcel that was originally acquired by grant deed in 1969. This portion is split-zoned as both open space and residential multifamily. Its general plan designation is high-density residential with a density range of four to 10 dwelling units per acre, could provide up to 30 units. The Vandenberg property would surround but does not include the county-operated park. In the development of this property's legal description, staff worked with park staff to determine an appropriate park boundary, ensuring sufficient area for any additional park amenities that might be added in the future. Considering its location and current zoning and the potential to rezone the open space area and the potential for multifamily development, the county's appraiser, Bender Rosenthal, determined the highest and best use as multifamily residential and valued the property at $594,000 or $3 per square foot. The Hap Arnold property was acquired by the county by grant deed for non-payment of property taxes in 1970. This parcel is owned residential multifamily with a density limitation of eight dwelling units per acre, so plus-or-minus three units could be accommodated there. Considering its location, current zoning, and potential for multifamily residential, Bender Rosenthal determined its highest and best use also as multifamily residential and valued the property at $45,000 or $2.50 per square foot. After notification to residents of the Saber City neighborhood, Real Estate Services provided a presentation to the West Placer Municipal Advisory Council meeting on May 9th. Staff shared information regarding the process of selling this property and responded to specific inquiries from Saber City residents. In response to an interest from a neighbor to acquire the Hap Arnold property, staff is recommending that this property be bid separately from the Vandenberg property. With your board's approval of staff recommendations, staff will first offer the properties for sale to specified public entities and housing sponsors for the purpose of developing affordable housing and/or for park, recreation, and open space purposes. If after 60 days of receipt of the county's notice and no offers are received, staff will then conduct auctions for each of these two properties. This process will be in accordance with the material terms of auction, which was placed on file and available with the clerk of the board. Following receipt of bids, staff will finalize agreements of purchase and sell with the highest qualified bidders and return to your board for confirmation of these agreements. Staff proposes to offer a commission of up to 3% of the purchase price, which would be paid through escrow should the buyer be represented by a broker. In conclusion, today's requested actions are the beginning of a process to dispose these vacant properties that are no longer required for public purposes. This process could result in sale proceeds to the general fund and could eliminate future costs and liabilities associated with the management of these properties. Any future project to develop properties would be subject to discretionary land use approvals and Environmental Quality Act in accordance with, and environmental review, I'm sorry, in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. Both Karen and I are here today to answer any questions you might have. Thank you for your time.
All righty. Any questions from board members? I see none. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board on this item? Morning, or good afternoon.
My name is Maria Dolores Hanifin, and I do own some property in Saber City. And also, my husband and I have been building affordable housing in Saber City. So when we're mentioning about that it will be offered to some housing, I'm not sure I got the complete word, housing authorities or...
Housing sponsors.
Sponsors. I did not understand what that meant, and I would like clarification, because even though my husband and I are a small outfit, a small corporation, building brand-new homes of less than 400,000 and selling it to some of the residents of Saber City, we would like to continue to do that, and we would like to have the option of maybe putting a bid on that. So I wanted to understand a little more about what would these other groups mean.
Do you want to take that?
Are you asking, is the question, "What is a housing sponsor?", or?
Yeah.
The housing sponsor is by the government code. It allows certain parties or certain entities to purchase property for purposes of low-income housing, and so we are authorized to offer it to housing sponsors for sale. But first, we have to comply with the code, which is first we offer it to public entities, and public entities are different ones throughout the area, and it can be, first we have to offer it to parks, we offer it to different government departments who have an opportunity to put an offer in on the property. And then if they, if they, if we don't receive an offer, then we're allowed to go proceed down through the process and offer it to an auction, put it out for a public auction, and anyone can bid on the properties at that time. So we have a two-step process that we're working through.
So the housing sponsor is defined in the government code 50079, and I think our understanding of this is you would be registered with the county housing authority, and you would be on a list in which we would notify.
So we'll have to register then?
Yes, and I could give you my card, and we can give you information if you'd like. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've been talking about affordable housing all morning, so it's like
I noticed.
This came in pretty handy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good afternoon.
My name is Shirley Svoboda, and I don't know if this is the time or place to ask the question, but I have been a resident of Saber City for 40, 45 years. I want to know why there are homes being built there when this is a mobile home park. There have been two homes that I know of that were built that $350,000. I don't consider that low income. I live there because when I bought there, that's what I could afford, and that's what I can still afford. If anybody can answer me why homes are being built in a mobile home park? And yes, we own our land. That is the advantage of living in Saber City. Thank you.
Can anybody answer that? I have no idea.
So at this point in time, I know that you wish some clarity on the future development there, but this is really the process to dispose of the property, and that would be subject to an application by the buyer and what they believe is the appropriate development for that site. It could be modular homes, it could be permanent housing. It's hard to say until we actually have a successful bidder who has a plan in mind for the development.
Well, somebody is buying property out there and building homes. They're swapping out the mobile homes and building homes. And then there's a rumor that one parcel out there, they're going to put in a two-story house. I mean, give me a break.
So my suggestion, because I don't think any of us know the answer to your question, because that's a land use planning question, is if you could go to the front window and leave your name and number, we'll make sure someone from our Community Development and Resource Agency gets back to you. My guess is going to be is because that is allowed and allowed use under our existing land use planning designations, but that's a guess.
Okay, well, thank you. I didn't know if this was the opportune time I was supposed to speak or not, but at least I can go home and say, "Well, I did open up my mouth." Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have another comment?
I have another comment that I think may answer some of her questions, because we are some of the people that own some of the properties and are building homes. One of the issues that occurs in the community is that because they're mobile homes, they become unaffordable to regular people that want to be able to buy a home for that price. And the reason is that the majority of those properties are not on a permanent foundation. And the reason is that the majority of those properties are not on a permanent foundation. Therefore FHA and VA and many other people that actually will be the primary entry point for those housing are not able to buy them. And therefore, they can only be bought cash, thing that those people cannot do. So, what we have done is actually build homes and yes, some of them were 350, but 350 is actually below market and some of them were 250. Therefore, those are affordable entry level homes. And then people can actually borrow money and buy them. So, we have to go through the process of actually getting the permits and doing everything to provide the community an entry point. And the majority of the houses have been sold to veterans, actually. We are a veteran-approved builder and we have actually sold them the majority to veterans. So, that's the reason why people are building homes because that's the only way to make it affordable. Otherwise, we'll have to be investors to buy the cash-only properties.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close the board comment and bring it back to the board for action. It's been moved and seconded to approve the sale of two vacant properties in the Saber City community. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none? Thank you. The item is moved. Thanks for your patience. Now, we'll move to item five, Board of Supervisors' minutes of approved minutes of June 5th, August 14th, August 28th, and July 10th. It's been moved in a second to approve the minutes so described. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? That item has been moved. Thank you. Now, we'll move to item six, County Executive Propose County Reorganization.
All right.
Mr. Leopold.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Supervisors. Over the last almost nine months that I've been here, you know, part of the task was an evaluation of the organization. And I've been fortunate to have the opportunity to kind of meet with all the different departments and elected offices, really looking at service delivery, internal kind of optimization and collaboration opportunities, and just the managerial oversight and balance that we have currently. What I'm proposing to you today is four different areas and I want to talk through this. If I can look through the first slide, it's a little grainy, but hopefully you can see this on your screen. This is the current structure that we have, and again, this is at a department level. We have our four deputies across just below myself, and they're really under these functional areas. So, one deputy focused on Tahoe. We have our Dave DeFanti, and that area is really our community and external service delivery. Kate Sampson handles a number of our elected offices as well as our internal operational groups. And then Becky Rigan is dealing with really our public safety and our human services area. The highlighted orange areas here represent the four different areas that I want to talk about and proposing for some changes to. Some of the intended benefits that I wanted to outline, really areas where we identify some consolidation opportunities for departments where they're appropriate. I'll talk to those two areas and kind of the benefits that I see there. The other is operational efficiencies and how we can talk about collaboration and working together. Aligning service delivery departments, so individual departments that interact with the number of clients and customers and constituents where we see some commonalities in that. I think there's some benefits to looking there. Also, as a result of this, are there areas where we can control cost or in some cases eliminate those operational costs? And then finally, just balancing that managerial workload. All of these proposals presented address one or all of these specific items. Let me step to the next slide and I'll come back to this one. So, the proposed structure identifies four different areas. I want to talk about, the first two are some consolidations, what we're calling departments right now. Currently, we have a Veteran Services Officer position and that office would be proposed to be moved under the Health and Human Services Department. This is an opportunity for them to work closely, more closely together. Couple areas of note with this one, they currently reside at the Sunset Facility, so right next to our other human services operations. I think the other bigger noteworthy factor here is very similar clientele and customers that they work with utilizing many of the same services that our veterans come in and request services from our Veteran Services Officer. Doesn't propose any changes to the current services that these veterans would receive. And in fact, this should provide greater access to services not only through our Veterans Office, but our human, Health and Human Services area and employment services as well as any public assistance they may need. The next area is our Farm Advisor Program. We currently, as a department, and the proposal is to coordinate that effort under our Agriculture Commissioner. I want to touch on a couple different areas around this one. One, I think the ability to utilize and collaborate on administrative staffing between both groups is enhanced there. We have some opportunities to share some financial resources together and we can do that in that sense. They currently utilize the same building and those functional areas and space that they currently reside in, they'll be able to utilize those rooms together. Third, and I think more importantly, no changes to service delivery would be taking place in this. The services of the Farm Advisor would continue in the same manner they're currently being offered. They'd just be provided with administrative support through the Agricultural Commissioner. We'd be addressing one area that I know our Human Resources Department as well as our County Council is discussed about county staff currently reporting to a non-county employee, and this is just pertaining to the Farm Advisor being a UC Davis employee. This would address that effort while ensuring that those staff members are still providing support to that Farm Advisor function. And this is also the county's ability to do this reorganization without any impact due to actual service delivery. The next item I wanted to talk to was the separation of our Public Works Department from our Facilities Management Operation. This conversation, I believe, has been in the works for quite some time even prior to my coming onboard, but I do think as we look at the number of functions and duties that both operations have, even though the leadership in this area has been outstanding, we're still dealing with a lot of effort with CIP planning, operational planning on facility side. And this just gives a greater effort for an individual to really focus on the leadership of that department while making sure that our Public Works operation is well-informed. We're in the process of talking with them about what that separation would look like. There's a couple different areas within facilities, and I'll talk about the timeframe here which would give an opportunity to kind of address this in an effective manner. Finally, as we continue to add technology resources in this organization, one of the areas that we're seeing a lot of is in our information technology area. And so, as the Administrative Services Director has announced his near-term departure at the end of the year, I think the conversation, look at Administrative Services makes a lot of sense. Identifying information technology is really a leader in this space and will continue to be the case. My proposal is to elevate that position to a department level. There are also three other divisions currently under Administrative Services, one being Revenue Services, Purchasing, and Central Services, our print shop and mailroom functions. Those responsibilities would maintain with Administrative Services Director through the remainder of his time at the county. As such, when he retires and the Assistant CEO position comes onboard, which is currently vacant, those three areas would roll underneath the Assistant County Executive position with elimination of that Administrative Services Department as a whole, but IT would be its department in and of itself. I want to talk briefly about timeframe for this. We're looking at really making sure nothing's changing today. What I propose is November 1st being the first of three different transitions, one with information technology, moving to a department level. We would take the Veteran Services position, we'd move it under Health and Human Services, so officially that take place November 1st. And then finally, the Farm Advisor would be moving under Agriculture on November 1st as well. None of these would result in changes in location, the staff would remain the same. We would be working on some administrative support for information technology since there is some coordination that goes on with those functions right now. But otherwise, these would just be changes in reporting relationships. The two larger areas, a true elimination of that Administrative Services Department would happen as of January 1st or shortly thereafter, the retirement of the current Administrative Services Director. And then Public Works and Facilities, this again would be proposed for January 1st for the simple fact we'd be taking in a vacant Assistant Public Works Director, or Assistant Director position, reassigning that to be the Facility Director and we recruit for that position. So, until that recruitment and hiring takes place, Ken would continue to serve in this collaborative fashion between Facilities and Public Works. Neither of these at this point are proposed to have any movements, so there wouldn't be changes in staffing location. This would just be change in reporting relationships. Finally, I want to talk a little about the impact to this because part of this is staffing on an annualized basis. So, I've identified the change from the Assistant Public Works Director to Facility Director. There would be a slight elevation in the salary for that. Our Deputy Information Technology Director position, we'd be reclassifying that to Chief Information Technology Officer consistent what's out there in the market today and the title that's being used, and there would be an impact, an increase in that area. However, where we'd see the reduction in overall costs would be under the current Administrative Services Director. That position would be eliminated as of the end of the year, at the end of that, the retirement of the current Director. He also has an Administrative Services position, we'd be eliminating that, however, that is currently unfunded, so there's no dollar amount there. The change in the Veteran Services Director and the Farm Advisor would be, there wouldn't be any impacts financially. So, the overall impact's about $220,000 annual reduction and two in terms of an FTE account. I'd love to answer any questions you might have about this and welcome any comments.
Questions from board members? Supervisory Montgomery.
Yeah, thank you. And I did have a couple of questions. I think some of these changes are really good ideas. Obviously, there's going to be some shaking out in these processes to really understand how this works. One of the things that I do have questions about is in terms of the eliminating the Administrative Services Department. What you're proposing, if I understand it, is those three tasks would become the responsibility of the currently vacant Assistant County Executive Officer?
That's correct.
Okay. And the reason I ask that is because it seems like there's some very different things in here. It seems like there's some that are very fiscally focused, particularly Revenue Services and then Purchasing clearly, but Central Services is a little bit different. And I'm wondering what your thought process is behind if we're going to break this department apart, keeping the three together versus maybe parcelling them out in a slightly different way?
Yeah, you know, it's interesting. Purchasing and Revenue Service will be financial-related functions. And the Central Services area is one that's been evaluated, I think, before previously. I think there was, we are going to, my understanding is the Central Services Manager is also going to be looking at retiring here in the near future. I think it creates an opportunity to continue to evaluate that. At the end of the day, these functions, I think, make a lot of sense to be, maybe not necessarily have to be under the County Executive Offices, just the Assistant County Manager can kind of look at this. I think our effort is also going to be looking at the financial side of the house, and I think these are really financially related. We currently have budget resides under the CEO's office and purchasing's probably another coordinated fashion that typically in a truly financed area, purchasing and budget reside in a similar location. So, it was more the sense of are there other individuals that can actually provide that service? And this is kind of an opportunity to do that while identifying an opportunity to maybe eliminate that position if, as a retirement comes up.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about it in my own brain, just thinking that there seem to be two very fiscally-based things here, and then there's Central Services, and it's, I don't remember if it was Sesame Street, but one of these things is not like the other. And while I don't, while I'm not terribly concerned with the idea of making this, at least temporarily under the Assistant County Executive Officer, I would suggest that maybe one of the first things that individual, as yet undetermined, does is really take a look to see if, you know, would it make more sense to put Revenue Services or Purchasing under the auditor, the treasure tax collector, or something that is more fiscally focused? And Central Services, I'm not sure where. But, you know, I think that would be a good first task or one of the first tasks that that position might consider taking on.
Yeah, I will share with you that, you know, when you look at Revenue Services, we're one of the only counties in this state that actually has Revenue Services under, it's usually in the Treasurer's Office. And so, you know, I will tell you, I think organizational structures are always fluid and I think there's always movement, and I think that's probably an area to look at. There's no question about it, but I think in the short term, I thought making a change, especially with a near-term departure, want to have some clarity about a location for them to reside at this point.
Okay, and then my only other comment on your proposed structure slide is I would just encourage us to start using the Eastern Placer County terminology rather than Tahoe. We have a fairly large geographic area up there that doesn't consider itself Tahoe, but that individual in that position is kind of responsible for all of that. And then that individual, at least currently, with the specific individual in charge there, has been really kind of our key CEO office point on housing. And so, you may want to consider a kind of a housing box under that set of responsibilities that may or may not stay with Eastern Placer County or not, but at least functionally, that's how it's been operating so far.
If I can touch on that, because I think it's a great example. I'm just showing departments right now, so things like purchasing, things like the Budget Office, some of these other functions that may not be departments in their very nature are not reflective on this word chart. So, I want to make that clear because there are a number of people and a number of really valuable services that we provide that aren't shown here. Many of these groups are residing underneath individual departments.
Yeah, and I...
Great point.
I just may be a little bit focused on housing after this morning's conversation, so thank you.
Good point.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll open it up to the audience. You step forward. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Board Chairman Holman and board members and staff. My name is Christine Turner and I'm the retired Placer County Agricultural Commissioner. I would like to address some of my concerns about the proposed reorganization that involves the Agriculture Department, County Agriculture Department, and the Farm Advisors' Office. As some of you know, I've worked with the Farm Advisors' Office in the capacity as the Ad Commissioner for over 11 years, and we work very closely together. But there are some either misunderstandings or maybe not enough information about the functions of the two departments that I think need to be really a part of this conversation, excuse me, conversation and proposed reorganization. First of all, the County Agriculture Department is truly a regulatory department. We enforce state laws and regulations at the local level. Our clientele is pretty much limited to farmers and ranchers, primarily those that involve the use of pesticides and... involve the use of pesticides and other horticulturally kind of related businesses, nurse, plant nurseries, that kind of thing, and also quarantine kinds of issues. So very regulatory in nature. In contrast, the Farm Advisors' Office is non-regulatory to a very pure sense. They are, they have no regulatory role whatsoever. And as a part of the University of California, they have systems that require confidentiality. They deal a great deal with children in the areas of 4-H, and all the volunteers that deal with their program areas as 4-H and Master Gardeners and their nutrition program. As part of the university versus the County Agriculture Department, their records are considered confidential, and it's been tested in a number of court cases that because of their clientele and volunteers and working with children, that those, their records are very confidential. And in fact, over the years, there were times when I would have wished that the Corporate Extension would have shared some of their databases with me, but they did not, and rightly so. In this case, we have three county clerical staff who are currently working under the direction of the County Director. Thank you. And reporting to a University of California staff. As a prior department head, I can certainly appreciate the dilemma that that can create from a county point of view. I had a similar battle when the federal government wanted to take over supervision of some county employees in my office. So I understand that. However, if those clerical staff are no longer supervised by the university, they will no longer have access to the confidential databases that they are required to utilize to support the programs within the Farm Advisors' Office. And that will then directly impact the ability of the, the delivery of those programs. So I don't come before you today with a solution here. I'm concerned that there needs to be greater conversation in more detail about the ins and outs of how such a proposed reorganization of having those three clerical staff report to the County Ag Commissioner would impact the ability of the Farm Advisors' Office to deliver their, excuse me, their programs in 4-H and Master Gardeners and the nutrition program, which affects hundreds of people, if not thousands of people in our county that they serve. So with that said, I would just encourage, whether it takes a little more delving into, it takes facilitated conversation, whatever it takes, and to think about solutions outside the box of maybe what we're used to thinking about. Farm Advisors have been a part of county systems for over 100 years. It's a really important role they play in our, for our public at all kinds of levels, and the overlap between the two departments, limited to just the farmer portion, is the smaller portion of what both departments do. So with that, I'd say thank you very much, and good luck with the solution.
Thank you, Christine. Is there anyone else here that would like to comment on this issue? I see none, so any comments, more comments, questions? Supervisor Montgomery?
I just have a question for County Council. So this, two things came up in Christine's comments that I would like a little bit more information about. One is the sort of regulatory versus the non-regulatory piece, and while I think that may have been much more siloed, ooh, it's a farm joke, sorry. Back when Christine was in charge of our Agriculture Department, I think with the direction of this board, Josh specifically has branched out a lot more to help with like incentivizing farmers and vintners to be more part of the development process and really assisting people in creating, you know, economically sustainable agricultural efforts. And so I think, can you talk a little bit about, is there really a strictly regulatory role that the Ag Commissioner has versus a non-regulatory role that the Farm Advisor has? And then I'll get to my second question.
So, no. Under the county code, the Ag Commissioner provides advice to the board on all items of ag nature. Certainly, the Ag Commissioner, and also, remember, the Ag Commissioner is also the holder of the Sealer and Weights, has quite a bit of regulatory programs that are followed through on. However, that nature of regulatory versus, I could say advisory, is common in a lot of departments in the county. For example, if you look at SEDRA, and you look at the, you have the Building Department, you have Code Enforcement, which is regulatory, you have Planning, which has its policies. So the fact that you would have regulatory functions for the Ag Commissioner, combined really with also more of the advisory side, I don't think is a criteria that would prevent you from putting the Farm Advisor under the Ag Commissioner. Those tasks simply function separately on their own.
So that leads me to the issue of confidentiality, which obviously is an important issue in this conversation. Is there, and I think Christine's suggestion that maybe we need to flesh this out a little bit more, but my question is, is, you know, is there a situation? So we've got three county staff who are county employees, being paid by the county, as I understand it, and then we have our UC Extension individual being paid by UC. Is there a process, a structure where to protect confidentiality, those three staff could report to the Farm Advisor, who then reported to the Ag Commissioner, who then, as happens now, the Ag Commissioner would report to the CEO's office? Is that a way that could protect that confidentiality that Christine raises concerns about?
I need to know more about how they function currently, but I can give you a couple of examples. I know Christine mentioned the one about the federal government who wanted to do some advising, wanted to actually step in the role of supervising county employees. We backed off and said, no, we can't have the federal government doing that. We have a different structure here. Again, I need to know more about where the confidentiality lies, but I will tell you that our office, for example, is a classic example of where we have CLUTS files in-house because we have our CPS attorneys. And we have internal systems set in place where nobody but those attorneys could ever look at those, those particular files. So we work through our computer systems, through our management, and it's all, of course, county employees, management to ensure that those files stay confidential. So I can't really directly answer your questions, I'm not sure how their system works, but there are ways of ensuring confidentiality of those files. And I'd suggest perhaps the CEO look a little bit more into how that can work. I don't see it as a, necessarily an impediment to blending it, simply identifying how to keep them confidential.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Is there any objection to withholding that Farm Advisor Department to, after we get, until we get some more information?
Yeah, I would, I would be comfortable with that. I'd like to see moving the others forward, and I'm, you know, certainly open to this idea around the Farm Advisor, but I do want to flesh out these particular issues before we take any action around it.
Any objection from other Board Members? Okay. All right then, I will entertain a motion.
Move the balance of the reorganizations.
Does the clerk understand the motion?
She's a smart girl.
Oh, I know that. It's been a long day, a long morning. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any abstentions? The item is moved with the exception of the UC Davis Farm Advisory Department realignment.
Right.
All right, are you ready to go into closed session? Thank you, everybody.
The Board will now adjourn to closed session to consider three items. One will be existing litigation, two will be labor negotiations, and P will be public employment.
What are we looking at?
The Board met in closed session to consider three items. On the first one, existing litigation, Tate versus County, the Board provided direction. On the second item, conference with labor negotiations, the Board provided direction. On the third item, public employment, no action was taken. That concludes closed session.
And that concludes the business before this Board. Thank you.